Go ahead.
Okay. Call the meeting of the Township of Persippany Troy Hills Planning Board to order. It's Monday, May 20th, 2019, and it's 7:30 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given and it's being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 6, that sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act. I ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll open the meeting to the general public for anything that's not appearing on our agenda for this evening. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public portion. If there is anyone here for the application for the communications tower in Lake Iowa that has been carried to our meeting of June 3rd, that will not be heard tonight, that will be on June 3rd. Okay? Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Perelik.
Here.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Mr. Fergieri.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Here.
Chairman Keller.
Here.
We also have our planner, Ms. Favate.
Here.
Our attorney, Mr. Carlson.
Here.
Our engineer, Mr. Candiano.
Here.
Okay. The minutes were sent to you for the meeting of April 22nd. Would someone move to approve?
Motion to approve. Von Aiken.
Is there a second?
Second, Hernandez.
Hernandez, seconds, please call a roll.
Mr. Perelik.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Yes.
Chairman Keller.
Yes. Okay, items on the agenda for this evening, first is application number 18 colon 525, Vivek Matinar, and that's located at 96 Chesapeake Avenue, block 593, lot 17, for minor subdivision with a C variance.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph O'Neil of Garofalo O'Neil Ruggiero here on behalf of the applicant. This is a continued hearing, but the applicant did have an opportunity to submit a revised plan for the subdivision, which we hope the board has had a chance to look at. It more evenly divides the properties with 50-foot frontages on each one of the properties. To help me go through that and the rest of the application, I have Mr. Petry with me this evening. I'd like to get some more.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
J. Michael Petry. P.E.T.R.Y.
Could you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience?
Certainly. I hold my bachelor's degree in architecture from the New Jersey Institute of Technology, which I earned in 1984. I've been continually involved in site development and infrastructure improvement projects throughout the state of New Jersey, particularly northern New Jersey, for my entire career. I have, I hold the license as a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, as a professional planner by virtue of examination in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a registered architect in the state of New Jersey. All of my licenses are current. I have appeared before planning and zoning boards on probably more than 1,000 occasions. It's probably been more than a decade since I've been here.
Anyone have any questions on Mr. Petry's qualifications?
Mr. Petry, you'll be testifying primarily as a planner this evening?
That is correct.
No questions? We'll accept.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Petry, you're familiar with the application that's before the board, including the amended plan that I mentioned earlier?
Yes, I am. In fact, the amended plan came as a suggestion that I made to the applicant when I was engaged for this project.
You've had an opportunity to examine the local ordinances and master plan?
Yes, I have.
I wonder if you could compare those documents to the application and give us your findings?
Certainly. We did prepare a planner's report, which was submitted, and I'm assuming distributed to the board members. I took all of the figures that were contained in that report, I blew them up, and I mounted them. What is on these boards are those figures in the same order as they appeared in the Other than size, the purposes of public, they are the same documents that you've already seen. The property in question is designated as lot 17 in block 593, and what's on the easel right now is the location map of figure two in the report. The property is located on Chesapeake Avenue, which runs side to side on the board, roughly down the road. North is pointing to the top, and the subject property is slightly off-center. It's hatched in black on this, on this board. You can see from the development pattern in the neighborhood that everything on three sides of the subject property is developed for single-family residential homes, and it abuts a commercial and apartment complex which fronts on North Beberwick Road immediately to the east of the subject property. The second display board is the tax map, which I believe was figure one in the report.
No, sir.
There it is. On this, we've taken the tax map and superimposed your zoning so that you can see that the property in question is in the R4 zone. The R4 zone encompasses all of Chesapeake, Iroquois, and Iowa Boulevard. The properties that front on Beberwick, in this instance, are R5 and B5, and those R5 and B5 zones on those two properties that front above the subject property along its easterly boundary. The property itself has a single-family house on it. It is 100 feet wide, it is approximately 125 feet deep. It's generally rectangular in shape, although there is a, there is a shot along the easterly property line, and that easterly property line is not exactly parallel with the westerly property line. The applicant is looking, in fact, this property is one of two 100-foot wide lots that are located along Chesapeake, the subject property here, and at the other end, as it abuts Roosevelt, there's a, there's a 100-foot lot that's also approximately 125 feet deep, that has a little bit more substantial home on it today. The applicant is seeking to subdivide this property into two lots, and at my recommendation, they change the frontages to be 50 feet. Why did they change the frontages to be 50 feet? Because the predominant development pattern in this neighborhood is 50-foot frontages, and it was going to be difficult for me as a planner to appear here and tell you that 48 and 1/2 fit in, despite the fact that, from a visual perspective, two lots are two lots. My case is much stronger from a planning perspective with the plan as revised. The subject lots will both have in excess of the 6,000 square foot requirement that's required by the R4 zone. They will both have 50 feet of frontage where 60 feet is required, and what has been presented to the board, I believe, at previous meeting, engineering plans that included conceptual plans for the homes, and those home sizes are in keeping with the development pattern of this neighborhood. I'll mention that I am somewhat intimately familiar with this neighborhood, having lived right there, at 174 Iowa Boulevard, in my early married years. In fact, my first two children were born there. So I ran these streets regularly, and I know this neighborhood very well. As I indicated, we're looking for lot, frontage variances on both of the two lots, and we took the time to listen to the tape of the original hearings, and I understand that the board wanted to, wanted a feel for the properties within 200 feet, and how many of those were not conforming. I looked at that, and I put it in my report. I also looked at the street of Chesapeake from Beberwick to Roosevelt, because in my opinion, as a planner, looking at the streetscape for a lot frontage variance is one of the most important things that you can do. When we evaluated both conditions, you'll see what was on figure three in our report, lots within 200 feet of the subject property, there are a total of 15 lots that are conforming, and they are shown in green, and there are 17 lots that are 50 feet or less within that 200-foot radius. So what we have is more lots, I think approximately 53 percent of the lots are 50 feet or less versus the conforming lots or the closer to conforming lots that are more than 50 feet. When we look at the streetscape of Chesapeake itself, what we'll see is there are a total of 11 lots that are conforming and 14 lots that are not conforming. So roughly 56 percent of the lots are non-conforming.
Just, just a, a quick remark, and that is, if you could move that so that any interested members of the public could see these, I don't know if they're here for this or not, but I think it's just good form.
You're correct. So the, I think from a planning perspective, we've looked at both the lots within 200 feet, I'll put that back up so the neighbors, anybody here can see it, and we looked at the lots along that particular stretch of Chesapeake. I think what's equally significant in this particular case is where this subject property lies in relation to the, to the zone limits. So what we have along North Beberwick Road is a more intense zone, there's commercial zones there, there's apartment zones there, and we're abutting it with a residential zone. From a planning perspective, what you like to see is you like to see the denser zones, the commercial zones, go to a more dense residential zone to a less dense residential zone. So from, from a planning perspective, having the largest lot in the neighborhood right next to the commercial zone doesn't make a lot of sense, but it's, it's what's there. In my opinion, I believe that these variances for both frontages can be granted under the C2 criteria. I believe that the relevant case law in this particular instance is the Kaufman case, and in fact, the Kaufman case was a subdivision case where it had a property that was being subdivided into two pieces. Both of the subject lots were going to be in excess of what the zoning ordinance required, and neither of the lots met the frontage requirement. And the Supreme Court found that in this particular case, the C2 criteria was appropriate because the predominant development pattern in the neighborhood was in keeping with what was being proposed by the applicant. So this specific lot has 100 feet of frontage, located immediately adjacent to an apartment zone and to a business zone. By taking this lot and creating two 55, 50-foot wide lots, we believe we're bringing this property into closer conformity with the development pattern of this neighborhood. In doing so, I offer that we are providing for a more appropriate population density at the same time, and that is one of the municipal land use law purposes of planning. I also offer that we are meeting purpose A, which is promotion of the general welfare. We are doing that because we are taking a property, we are upgrading the appearance of that property by virtue of new construction on that property, new construction that is appropriately sized for this neighborhood, and therefore, it's not only a promotion of the general welfare, but it's a promotion of a desirable visual environment that you'll see when this is completed. I believe that the neighborhood is used to driving by similarly sized lots, because along this particular stretch, you're going to see 17 of them, and I believe that the, that because of that reason, because of that development pattern along the streetscape as one drives, or walks, or runs up Chesapeake Avenue, that the predominant development pattern is maintained by the subdivision of this lot, wherein the alternative, a larger lot not in keeping with this, or a larger home not in keeping with this neighborhood could be constructed on this oversized lot. I believe that from a negative criteria perspective, there is not a substantial detriment to the public good. I base that on the fact that we, we are developing a pattern, again, that is in keeping with the neighborhood, and when we look at the master plan, I believe we actually, we actually enhanced several goals that were set forth in the 2014 master plan report. Goal number three is to provide a variety of housing types, densities, and balanced housing supply in appropriate locations of service of township. Again, 50-foot lots at this location are appropriately sized, it's appropriate density for this particular neighborhood. I offer that this subdivision is in, in an appropriate location because of the number of lot, non-conforming lot widths that exist today and its proximity to the denser zone. That will, in my opinion, add to the enhancement of the neighborhood. Goal number seven encourages new development to take into account the aesthetic character of, of the community in an effort to enhance the visual and aesthetic appearance of municipality. Again, appropriately sized homes that have been shown on the conceptual development plan are in keeping with this neighborhood and in keeping with the development pattern. I offer that the transformation of this property to a newly developed property will enhance the appearance of not only the neighborhoods but municipality, and I believe by providing an appealing environment, keeping in kind with the development pattern of the neighborhood, that the lot width variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, or without impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Petry. I do have one question for you. One of the issues under consideration the last time was the existence of this rather large tree on one of the proposed lots, and it was the board's interest to maintain that tree. And while our client wants to do that, we haven't really surveyed the root mass below the tree, so we can't guarantee that at this time. Do you think that significantly impacts the ability of this board to approve this application if that tree can't be saved?
I, I don't believe it impacts the ability of the board to approve the application. I believe that if that tree were damaged by construction, and generally, if you're excavating within the canopy area of the tree, it's a pretty substantial tree, and if you're excavating within the canopy area of the tree, you, you risk losing that tree. That's construction 101. So while we're, while we would only be impacting one side of the root system of the tree, it depends upon how though the root system of that tree grows. If it grows to the, to the rear of the property rather than to the front of the property, we could have a negative impact on it with any construction on this parcel. So while I believe that the applicant can make an effort to save it, I don't believe that the applicant can guarantee that it will be saved. And my...
Okay. Have no further questions for this witness?
Regarding the tree, no one can, you can be seated if you like. No one can guarantee nature, but if you could make every effort possible, placement of the house or whatever, to make your best effort to save that tree, it's, as you said, a substantial...
It is substantial.
A couple of questions. Of the greenhouses, those are the ones in, in compliance.
That is correct.
How many of them are just 60 feet?
On...
You mentioned...
Chesapeake itself, there are none that are 60 feet. In fact, if you look at the, the map on a whole in the 200-foot radius, 1, 2, 3, 3 are 60.
60 is, is the zoning. So they're larger than 60?
They, they range on, on Chesapeake, they range from 70 to 100.
Now, for your proposed subdivision, the frontage is the only variance you're looking for?
That is correct. We need lot size in both instances, and frontage is the only variance that we're looking for.
And with the proposed dwellings, setbacks, all that will, will be met?
They, I saw...
Side yard, backyard, all that.
Yeah, they're shown on the conceptual development plan, everything's met. Coverage is everything.
Okay. I'll ask our planner, if she has any questions for you.
Yeah, the only questions we had, or comments we had, there was some discussion by the board at the last meeting about, basically to the extent of, you know, you see the architectural plans, and you see the, the plans that are, you know, before you, and how can we ever hold an applicant to that? And so I actually, in the NRM, I spoke with Scott and also with the township attorney to, you know, to try to get at that concern, and it's the opinion of both of them that under current case law, that the planning board is authorized, particularly where variances are being requested, is authorized to hold the applicant to the plans that are proposed. So in effect, you would give as a condition of approval, if you choose to approve this, you could make a condition of approval that the, the houses are constructed as consistent with the architectural plans that were shown. And similarly, I think, another issue that I think I had raised before is on landscaping, and I just, I again wanted to check with legal first, and that is their opinion again, that under case law, that where variances are requested, as a, as a reasonable mitigation of those variances, the planning board is authorized to impose, you know, reasonable conditions, and it's our opinion that a landscaping plan provided for each of the two new lots that shows buffering between the lots, and particularly buffering between the easternmost lot and the commercial area, would really serve to mitigate the, the narrower lot widths, which is really the variances being requested. So we would make that recommendation that, that the applicant submit as a condition of approval, indeed not hold up on approval if the board is ready to, and makes that action tonight, but it could be a condition of the approval, the landscaping plan could be reviewed by our office, as well as Parks and Forestry, and it's our opinion that that's a reasonable mitigation measure. And again, we reiterate that at the least, there should be an additional planting in the front yard of lot 1701, perhaps not a tree, just because it's probably under the shade of the existing large tree, but it could be a significant shrub that's, that's appropriate for that space. So those were really our only comments, and we had noted in the memo that, that the lots are now uniformly 50 feet, which we think is positive stuff, but really, we were mainly focused on the landscaping. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Neil, your willingness to comply?
We would agree with that condition, but we would ask that we be allowed, should the board see fit to approve this application, to work with Parks and Forestry. It's been my experience that they usually have certain comments, even when we submit landscaping plans, they tend to change. So we would ask that that condition definitely stays, as Ms. Favate mentioned, that we work with Parks and Forestry in that regard.
Yep, it's appropriate.
And the architectural design, I submitted?
We will agree to that condition.
Okay. Mr. Candiano, do you have any questions?
Yeah, regarding the, the large oak tree, the grades are relatively flat out there, and the proposed house is in line with the foundation of the existing house. So again, as suggested, I, every effort should be made to, and actually show on the plan a larger tree protection area and limit that limited disturbance around that tree to keep it back as near as the house as possible and away from it on the sides, not being disturbed. Really don't have to do any real grading there, so the roots can stay undisturbed for the most part. So again, just to, that, that, that limited disturbance gets shown on this plan, so when they go to the lot development plan, they use it as a base, and they'll, they'll have that information. Likewise, there are several comments that I have regarding details for roof drainage, details for utility connection, details or notes for pavement restoration. We'll work with them along with its conditions of the approval. Those notes should be put on this plan so that when they do the development, the lot grading plan, that they have that again as a guide. That's my comment.
You say that again, Mr. Candiano, just to cut the...
Yeah, just to follow the conditions or the requests in, in the engineer's letter, and that the limit of disturbance be revised in the front yard to, to maximize the area of the tree protection.
I got that one. It's the second one, can you word that for me?
Um, that the, as a condition, the, the comments for the additional details and notes be...
Okay.
Be a condition of approval.
Just like to reemphasize again that the applicant's going to take every measure it can to try to protect that tree, but not knowing where the root mass is, you cannot guarantee that that tree can be protected. But we will take every step we can to, to save that tree.
That, that tree's a big part of the drainage. All right. Any other members of the board have any questions?
Yes. It appears based off the maps that are provided, that the property lines would then align with the, with their neighbors to the back in terms of the distance and, and where the corners meet. Is that, is that a correct assumption?
The, the subdivision line is 50 feet in the front, it angles towards the back. It actually almost mimics the easterly line.
Okay.
Once it gets past that 50-foot frontage.
So it's not a straight line from the front to the back?
It's not a straight line.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if the tree can't be saved, have you given any thought as to what you might do at the area that the tree occupied?
Well, we'd certainly plant new trees. If we were, if, if the tree were to be damaged by construction, we would be able to then plant two shade trees along the street frontage of the two homes.
Okay, thank you. We'll work with Parks and Forestry in that regard.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, actually, one, one small one. I recognize that at this level, we don't necessarily have to have all the details, but the new plan that you handed out to the board doesn't show any new driveways, any new place for off-street parking. Is there any intention, or is that to be determined?
The, the subdivision map, the subdivision map doesn't show it. The engineering drawings, do not include it. The architectural plans attached don't show it either, so we can certainly add that to the plan, although they do show garage.
I believe it's on C3.
C3? Okay, I don't have C3, so, there you go. Or if I do, actually, I do have it. Oh my God. Okay, oh, very good. Well, that answers my question. I mean, it's, it's in your material, I just wanted to make sure, because I, I listened to the tape, because I wasn't here at the last meeting, and going through the material tonight, I did not see the driveway. Thank you.
Anyone else?
What I'd like to do before we actually, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, anyone in the public have any questions for this witness? Questions? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public portion.
Is that all your testimony for tonight, Mr. Hernandez?
We have no further testimony.
Okay. Before we, we actually proceed to a vote, I would like to just get your, your thoughts on this, so that if there are any concerns, the applicant can, can revise before we would actually vote. Would you please call through the roll, Nora?
Mr. Perelik?
Yes. No, not vote. Do you have any thoughts on...
You're not voting, require any concerns?
No, I'm sorry. Not the approved candidate.
Just your open discussion, your thoughts on the application.
No comment.
Nothing?
Okay.
Mr. Dinsmore?
I thought Mr. Petry's presentation was very good. It got to the, to the heart of the matter. I thought his explanation of having it 50 feet, I like the fact that he did, even though it's kind of OCD to have something exactly 50 feet, I think the fact that it was 50 feet made it so that it was not the smallest width in the area. Everything else, the smallest is 50 feet. There are no 40-foot. The, the area that I lived in, in Glenwood, in Lake Iowa, had a lot of 40-foot lots. I think it's very consistent with the area. I don't think it changes the area in any way. I think that two nice houses can be built there, and as, as long as the setback from the side lot is a little bigger than the minimum, I think the visual impact will be negligible. I think it'll be a very appropriate development, so I'm in favor of the application as presented tonight.
Mr. Fergieri?
I would just say the, the applicant obviously added additional information in Mr. Petry's testimony. This application for me is, answers a lot of questions that were kind of hanging over this last time we were here. You know, for, for me personally, there's always this sense of houses shoehorned next to each other, and that's sort of like a subjective reaction that I have to a lot of these things, but it was a good presentation this evening, and as far as the criteria you needed to meet, from my, my own standards, I think you have.
Thank you.
Ms. Hernandez?
I agree with, with my colleagues here who have just said. I appreciate your testimony. I did have the same concerns.
I did have the same concerns. I do agree also with the recommendations of our planner, that what's on the architectural drawings will be what we see out there, and while it's completed. And please try to work with Parks and Forestry with the tree.
Always do.
It's so important. And I appreciate you taking the time to come back and do this, and get it right. I feel better about this now.
Mr. Mealy?
Regardless of what may or may not happen to the large tree, are we assured that we will get some trees in the front of the property, as you mentioned?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
We're going to include, I have as a condition of the application, that if this tree is for any reason removed, that one tree on it will be added to each lot in the front yard.
Right. Mr. Von Aken?
Well, one of my large concerns about this application the last time was our ability to enforce any plans. I appreciate the work that our planner and our lawyer put into, you know, confirming that detail, because it's so hard to see lots get divided, and then something that just does not work for the community get put in its place. So, I appreciate the design work that you've put into it. I feel that's appropriate for the community, and I think the fifty-foot line is also very important, because it establishes that fifty foot is the minimum for that community. We haven't budged on that, and I think that's very important as well. So, with that in mind, I feel like we're not establishing any new precedents in terms of lot width, which is very important here. So, I'm in favor at this point.
Chairman Keller?
First, thank you for taking our advice from the last meeting, and revising, coming back, and addressing our concerns. Thank you also for being willing to comply with the recommendations that our planner made. So, that all having been said, I would entertain a motion on this application.
Is there anybody in the public that wants to speak to us?
Ah, no.
General public comment, yeah.
Yeah, anyone in the public that wants to comment on this application, for or against, up to you. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public comment period, and entertain a motion.
You stop doing this, though.
None of everybody wants.
I'm trying to find the details here. There we go. Okay, Mr. Chairman, in application eighteen colon five-two-five, Vivek Manchachar?
Machar.
Machar, okay. Ninety-six Chesapeake Avenue, Block 593, Lot 17. I move that we grant minor subdivision with C variance relief, subject to...
The following conditions. Number one, applicant shall make all reasonable efforts to preserve the existing tree on site to the satisfaction of the board's engineer and township forester. If the tree is removed, the applicant shall plant a shade tree in the front yard of each of the newly created lots. Houses are to be constructed in accordance with the plans provided to the board, to the satisfaction of the board's engineer. The applicant shall submit a revised landscaping plan to provide better buffering between the lots and an additional planting in the front of Lot 17.0, to the satisfaction of the board planner and forester. Four, the plan shall be revised to show the limit of disturbance in the front, and same shall be designed to, excuse me, attempt to preserve the existing tree. And five, the applicant shall provide the additional comments and notes requested in the board engineer review letter.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Mealy.
Please call a roll?
Mr. Perelik?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Von Aken?
Yes.
Chairman Keller?
Yes. Please don't run for president. We have one that's difficult to pronounce. We don't... Congratulations, good luck.
Have a nice evening.
Next application is Petroleum Marketing Group, twenty-three fifty-nine Route 46. Amended preliminary and final site plan with C variance, application number nineteen colon five oh five.
Dominic has always been well organized.
How many planning boards do you need to go to?
I'm the one that's flipping through stuff all the time.
Well, hey, they're already selected American Idol, no reason to say it. Are you a fan?
Maybe she answered my question.
Man.
And people have gotten away with that over the years.
Yeah. Last year, sorry. Well, that's why, I mean, I hadn't dug through the bigger...
Okay, ready?
Chairman, members of the board, my name is John Lorrelli, law firm of Price, Steve Shonman in Delaney, New Jersey. This evening, on behalf of Petroleum Marketing Group, we are the distributors for Exxon MOL Station, we have the operators, but I do have the operator here tonight, in case of any question that's to be asked.
Counsel, can you just spell your last name for me?
M-O-L-I-N-E-L-L-I. Thank you for asking me that, because you come back from Molinari, so I appreciate that.
It would have been worse.
We are here tonight for site plan approval for certain modifications that have been made to the gas station right across the highway from us in the board. Again, on behalf of my client, let me offer to this township, through this planning board, our, may I call that, our apology, since the improvements that we're talking about this evening have already been installed. And we'll go into exactly how it happened. This is a national branding initiative that Exxon has been rolling out for some time. I think most of the major gas stations are doing it. Although we, in New Jersey, I'm proud to say this, remain the only state that does not permit self-service, the rebranding and the modeling of gas stations is approaching, I don't know whether any of you buy your gas through Exxon, but whatever gas station you use, invariably now, you can now use your phone app to purchase. And that's why it's important to have a different type of environment as somebody comes up to the pump, particularly the number of the pump, since if you're going to buy from a pump with an app, you have to authorize that particular pump. Fascinating things are living now. There were four improvements. One of them was the main sign that is out the front. We haven't really changed anything of it. All we did is we took away, I'm going to call them the placard numbers, where you put up the price of the fuel, and replaced that with LED. It doesn't mean that the operator or the distributor is going to be changing gas prices every ten minutes. In fact, we can only change them once per day, but the LED light really is more easily observable, and it's just easier to change. The more significant things we've done, and they're all really related to the pumps, there are five pumps at this station, and the requests are five synergy wave signs. They come up, and then they bend over. I mean, even though, we certainly apologize for the fact that the work has been done, it does give this board an opportunity to actually see the work. So you understand, if you look at it even today, they come up and they come over the tanks, that's the synergy wave. And there are five of them. It's not an arbitrary number, there are five pumps, and these synergy waves go over the pumps. There are five koala signs with ears attached, they are also attributed to each and every pump. They require variances. You're only allowed to have one freestanding sign that is the wave sign, the synergy wave. Since one is on each pump, it technically is five, so that is a variance to go to five instead of the maximum of one. The koalas, you are allowed that type of sign, three of them on this site, since there is one on each post of each part of the assembly, we have five. The last thing is, we have ear, we pull an ear designation on each one, that's to designate what pump number that you are at. That does not require a variance, but it's part of the site plan approval that we asked for this evening. I have two witnesses. I have Mr. Dipple, the engineer, who will agree to go through the plans, and I've wrote a planner, since we do need variances for five versus one of the wave signs, and five versus three of the koala signs. So we're ready to proceed with your questions, Chairman.
Proceed.
Okay, Dipple?
I don't see the koala.
So, would you raise your right hand, please? You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record?
Sure. Mike Dipple is my business partner, filling in for him tonight. It's William R. Vogt, Jr. This is Victor O., G. like girl, T. like Tom.
Would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications?
Sure.
And you can take the mic, it'll be helpful.
Sure. Sure. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from SUNY Buffalo at New York. I have a professional, I'm licensed as a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, as well as New York, and I'm one of the owners and principals of L2A Land Design LLC, and we're situated in Englewood, New Jersey. I've appeared before your zoning board of adjustment, I think at the end of 2012, I represented New Jersey Manufacturers Insurance Company, and that was for their hundred-year anniversary, and that was for an anniversary sign in front of your board of adjustment.
So, I'm sorry about that. I would ask that he be qualified to testify?
Anyone have any questions on his qualifications? Okay, we'll accept. Before we get started, though, my apologies, you should have gone through the waivers. Do you want to do that with your witnesses, or you have requested several?
Several.
I have Mr. Favate.
And they are indicated on your planner's report, and obviously, many of them are based upon the fact that there's really no new construction. So I can have Mr. Vogt go through them.
Susan, do you have any comments before we...
Yeah, I mean, we had recommended granting of nearly, well, all of the waivers, really, because of the fact that there's no new construction proposed. The only one we requested be addressed in testimony was on lighting of the signs, and just to confirm...
Let me just correct that. I don't, it's probably our fault. The wave signs are not internally lit. There's no internal lighting. So, we won't be addressing that, because they're not internally lit.
They're not lit, okay.
Okay, someone move on the waivers, then?
I move. The waivers presented in the BFJ planning memo.
Second?
Second, Fergieri.
Mr. Perelik, seconds, please call a roll.
Mr. Perelik?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Von Aken?
Yes.
Chairman Keller?
Yes. Just a little housekeeping, you take care of it.
Thank you. You want to go stand by the plan?
Sure.
Mr. Vogt, you or an individual under your direction, with your supervision, prepared a two-page site plan dated February twenty-two, 2019, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that site plan is now up in front of you, and you're going to address that to the board?
Correct. It's the board to the board's right, and again...
Carl, so do you want me to mark that as an exhibit?
Was that part of the plan submitted?
Yeah, it was.
It was.
Was it colorized? Let's mark it, A1.
A1, two-page site plan?
Yep, and I also have an aerial exhibit from Google Earth, just to get the board situated where the property is. I can label that as A2.
A2, in large photograph, aerial photograph?
Correct.
Just to put it in perspective, on the photograph, do you think the building we're in right now is...
Sure, we're, north is to the top of the page, and we're directly across the street right now. So the station is directly on the other side of Route 46, to the south of us, where we border three rights of way. Route 46 to the north, we have Columbus Way to the east, and then we have Route 202 to the west. As you can see from the aerial photo, we're not planning any site improvements. Access to the site still remains from Route 46, as well as from Columbus Way. There's no site access along 202. And again, all the improvements are only sign-related. There are no building additions, there's no additions to the canopy, the number of dispensers, any of the parking, circulation, or any of the landscaping or lighting features on the site. It's purely just these four sign categories that I'm going to review with you. So, if I switch to...
Let me bring you first to page one. Let's start with the freestanding sign. Can you show that in the lower right of your drawing where the freestanding sign is showing?
Sure. The freestanding sign is at the corner of Route 46 and 202, and that's an existing freestanding sign. If, if I flip to...
Second page of A1?
Right, which is C2. You can see, what we did is, we just replaced the static price sign to a digital sign. So it fit, we fit within the parameters of the existing framework, and it just was a swap for each of those four panels, went from a static to a digital board.
So the dimensions of the signs indicated on page two of A1 are the same, they have not been changed in any way?
They're exactly the same as the existing framework.
Colors have not been changed, nothing else?
The colors are all identical to what was there.
All right. Free, you then go back to page one. Direct your attention to the synergy wave freestanding signs, also noted as either B on your table. Could you just point those out?
Sure. So those are those candy cane-type freestanding signs that are near each of the five dispensers, and we attributed them to the B label, so there's one at each dispenser. And again, if I go back to CO2 on A1, we have the synergy wave, and you can see that it arcs up and over the existing fueling dispenser.
Now, the height and the measurements all comply with the law of the board, is that correct?
The height, we're supposed to be a minimum of ten foot clear from the ground to the bottom of the sign. We're slightly lower at nine and a half feet, but again, it's directly over the dispenser. There's no interference with any customers, or pedestrians, or vehicles that may be going below that. So, that is a variance that we're asking for, but it's a minor deviation from the height requirement.
The actual variance, by the way, is that we have five of them, correct?
That's the additional variance, that there's five of those signs.
So what you were just speaking about would be characterized as like a design waiver, perhaps, rather than a variance? The height issue?
Well, we found it in the B1 zoning for signs, in particular, the section, hold on, I'll grab it for you. It was under Section 6, which is gasoline station signage, and particular to subsection C, where it talks about, let's see here, where it talks about the height off the ground, and it, sorry, to subsection A, and it refers to ten feet between the baseline of the sign and the ground. So, the sign shall have an open area of not less than ten feet between the baseline of the sign and the ground. So, I believe it would be a variance.
It sounds like a variance.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, the nine and a half foot, the whole purpose of a minimum height is to prevent anyone from running into it or striking it, correct?
Mostly. That is the intent.
And on every one of the five, you've shown it on the upper left of page two of A1, it actually loops above the tag. Is that the same for each one of the five?
That's correct. So it's nine and a half feet from the ground level to the bottom of the synergy arc.
All right. I'd like to direct your attention to what we refer to as the koala wall signs. Could you point them out on page one?
Sure. The koala wall signs are, they're categorized as a wall sign, and there are, again, there's five of them. They are attached to each of the canopy columns that come down to support that overhead canopy at each of the five dispenser locations. And again, if I flip to CO2, the koala wall sign is shown. Here is the canopy column that comes down, you have your multi-product dispenser, and then it's a three, it occupies three sides of that four-sided canopy column. Again, we're asking for three variances, I believe, on that sign. One is for the number of signs, only three are permitted, and we're asking for five. The projection, the maximum projection is six inches. We slightly exceed that at seven inches, and, but it does not interfere with any operations. Again, that seven inches is on the side that's parallel to the customer. So when... So when the customer pulls up, the seven inches goes in parallel to where they're parking. So it's, it's not projecting towards the car where, when it's fueling. It's projected in a, in a horizontal plane to it. So again, it's, it's one inch bigger. And then the last variance for those koala signs is the, there's a minimum height requirement for a wall sign. You have to be, again, eight feet from grade, from existing grade to the bottom of the sign. And again, that's for, to eliminate any interference from people walking near it, since it's a wall sign. These signs are at four-foot mounting height, and again, that's, that's to be consistent with the customer's eye at both the seating level in their car, as well as if they do get out of their car, to see that information sign.
Mr. Chairman, I have some additional photos I'd like to introduce to you, if I could hand them.
Please do.
Going to mark this A3?
What's that?
We're going to mark this A3?
A3. Some of you maybe can share, I didn't realize I was going to have 12, 10 years. Eight, A4, A3, and A3A. There's two pages.
You just mark the package.
Okay, that's fine. I'll show you two photographs. I want this A3, pull that up, and just, once again, using that photograph, indicate which one is the freestanding synergy wave, which one is the koala, and which one is the number wedge?
Sure. The, the synergy wave sign, again, on A3, is this candy cane-shaped inverted L that goes up and over the multi-product dispenser. The koala sign is attached to the canopy column stanchion, and it's along three sides of that four-sided column. And then the, the third sign, which we didn't get to, is a directional sign. It's the numeric wedge sign, which basically tells you which, which pump you're at. So there's, there's five pumps, 10 fueling positions, so these would be numbered 1 through 10.
Now, I know you did not design the sign, you're done by Exxon, but from an engineering standpoint, you would agree that all three of these signs or structures are an integral part of the pump itself?
Yes.
Designed for, to allow customers easy through, easy identification of what it is? Is that correct?
Correct. As you can see from the photos, you have your multi-product dispenser, and, and these three signs are geared towards the customer. It's to get the customer's attention, to direct them that this is where the fueling operation is, and once they're there, they know which pump designation they're at, they understand the information that's on the koala, as well as the, as well as the wave. It gives information about the hazards of fueling your car there, warning signals. It also tells them about how to pay for the gas. There's multi options, as we discussed earlier this evening. It also tells you about the product that they're putting in their car, the improvements that they've made to their product, and how it's benefiting you as the customer and your, and your vehicle. And it also talks about promotional items that they have, all these, Exxon has promotions through their credit cards, through their apps. So it informs the customer of all these options that are available to them, and how to get them.
Making it easier for the customer to know where they have to stop, where the car is to be serviced, from an engineering perspective, that prevents somebody from getting back in the car, turning it back on, moving it another five feet, allows for more orderly transition through the pumping stations? Is that correct?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And in fact, there's a quick check that is in front. If you were coming off of 46, and you go into the station, and then you go straight into quick check, also allows for a greater awareness of people operating vehicles on the site with regard to any other pedestrians or anyone else going into the quick check.
That, that is also true. Again, we're, we're fronted by three rights of way. Route 46 is a 50 mile an hour roadway, so when you come into the site, obviously, you're slowing down from the 50 mile an hour, but getting your attention, getting to, getting the customer to where they need to be at those five fueling locations is important. There's no access off of Route 202, but again, off of Columbus Way, again, a lower speed roadway, but again, you're coming into the side of the property. The site is, is an acre, so you do need to find your way around the site to those pumps.
Will the number wedge signs be lit?
No, none of the signs that we're proposing are lit, except for the existing pile-on sign that's along Route 46. You have plenty of light from the canopy above.
Yeah, there's no other lighting changed at all for this area?
No.
That's all I have, Mr. Vogt, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any board members?
Hi, hi. Do you have a question?
Just a second. Susan, do you have anything?
No. My only question had been regarding the lighting, and that was answered early on. You know, I think this is a curious application in that they are technically signs, according to zoning, but they really do function as part of the gas station equipment.
Shikandriato?
I have nothing.
Okay. Board members?
Yeah, it's, it's a technical issue. As I heard the testimony about the variance, just the, the fact that the synergy sign also, I think the, the ordinance or whatever stipulated 10 feet clear, but this is over a pump, so is that a second variance? The fact that there's a whole pumping structure underneath it, whereas the language said it's supposed to be clear to the, to the grade? So we're not only adjusting for nine and a half feet, which is fine, I'm just saying that, that it is something else.
I think it's just variance for relief from that provision. It would cover both, I think. We just stated it that way. Variance for, for relief from that provision.
You see what I'm saying, Susan?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've identified a contradictory...
It's not a 10 feet, nor is it clear.
...in our ordinance that I have to fix, but, but yeah, I think the variance can cover the full, the full request.
Just, just a crazy observation. If that synergy sign were to be made an integral part of the pump structure, they wouldn't be here for this.
They wouldn't be here for that variance.
Right. There would be other, other things, but I'm, I'm just saying that with regards to the sign.
Right. It's because there's that separation makes it a sign.
Yep. Exactly. Okay.
I, I have a question for the witnesses. So you, you gave testimony that this is largely for safety, for direction to the pump, but overwhelmingly, I see credit card advertisement on these signs, not the safety recommendations that you're talking about. You spent one, I'm not done yet. You spent a large amount of your time talking about how this directs people to the pump, and how it performs all those other functions, but the only amount of space that I see here identifying the safety things that you're talking about is a small portion on the koala sign, and absolutely nothing on the synergy sign whatsoever. So I, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the weight you're giving to certain parts of your testimony.
Right. I, I think in our application, we make it clear, advertising is certainly a driving force, but also the overall identification of the pump. The synergy sign, obviously, was shown on A3, which suggests it's more advertising. That's what it says today. Of course, the lower sections do have, it looks like there's one sign on there, I think, that does relate to the fuel that's going into your vehicle. And this might change as you go on, but I don't deny the fact that there is an advertising component.
So here, here's the reason for my concern. We put restrictions on all other types of businesses for the amount of space they can occupy in their windows, and other features as well, and it seems like this is competitively unfair to some of those businesses in some ways. The amount of street presence that they can have for freestanding signs and that kind of thing, that, that's my reason for the concern here.
Fair comment. If, if this was 10 times the size, and the advertising part of that exceeded the allowable square footage that you're allowed for a sign, which I know is what the issue is in the windows for local businesses, you don't want the real huge size. They're rather small, you can even see from the photograph. It's, the only person really seeing it is the person really at the pump. I wouldn't suggest if anyone, in fact, page two of A3 is the same shot from a distance. The advertising value at that level diminishes somewhat. You see the, the figure, you see the, what it looks like, and I think that was perhaps what Exxon was getting to, it wanted to have a certain look to it. But I don't deny the fact that there was an advertising component, but it is all focusing on each of the five pumps. Local ordinance, whatever the approval was, allowed five pumps. So if, if this was a one-pump station, we would only have one. If it was three, we'd only have three.
I, I don't object to five instead of three, mostly for the reasons that you just gave. It, it seems like there's an overwhelming presence, but, you know, at the same time, I, I respect your business, or the businesses, you know, designed to try and draw their customers' attention to their products, so.
Right. Obviously, the state current as well. I mean, Exxon is not the only petroleum company that is rebranding its stores. They're all doing it. And this is Exxon's idea in terms of how they want to make their stations more attractive.
Okay.
It's, it's a good point, but I'm just thinking that if, if this were all indoors, we wouldn't give it a single thought. The whole point is to have it read by the, I'm assuming the whole point of this is to have the customer in their car who's right there be able to read what's there.
Right. And to identify as they're coming up to.
And, but not...
We're still going to forget what side of the car our, our cap is on, but at least we'll know where we are.
There's a little arrow on the field.
I know that, too. Thank you, Facebook.
Until I drive my son's car, and then I, I can't even find the arrow.
Well, yeah, I'm having that trouble myself.
Your son doesn't care, as long as you fill the tank.
Yeah, which was, oh, yes.
Any other board members have any questions? Any members of the public have any questions for this witness? All right, seeing no one come forward, close the public portion, and let you continue.
Thank you.
Williams?
Raise your right hand, please. Swear the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I most certainly do.
You state and spell your name for the record, please.
Certainly. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is George Whittle Williams. Williams with an S, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S.
Would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience?
Certainly. I completed my graduate studies in city and regional planning at the Rutgers Graduate School, now the Lausanne School of Planning and Policy Development, just to date myself a little bit. I'm licensed by the State Board of Professional Planners, and nationally certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've been practicing in the field of planning for close to 30 years now, with a primary focus on land use, obviously, as well as community and economic development planning, but I and my firm practice in a variety of planning specialities, including development of master plans, zoning ordinances, redevelopment plans, lots of those, civic engagement, creative place making. I've testified before numerous land use boards throughout the state of New Jersey, but I believe this is my first time before this Board of Adjustment.
And you've offered testimony in the area of gas stations and mixed gas station retail use?
I have. In point of fact, when I began my career as an intern, I worked for a law firm that represented Exxon. Tell you how life comes full circle, and in that time, the modernization was less on signage and more about canopies in the late 90s. I have, continue to do, do testimony, testimony in support of gas stations since then.
I would offer, Mr. Williams, as a planner.
Your, your licenses are all current?
Yes, they are, sir.
Any board members have any questions on his qualifications? They will accept and congratulate your first visit.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Williams, you have, in preparation of your testimony here this evening, reviewed the Township's zoning regulations and its 2014 reexamination report?
Yes, I have.
You've actually looked at the application, and in fact, you were here while Mr. Vogt testified a few moments ago?
Yes, I was.
All right. You visited the site on a few occasions?
A few occasions, including most recently this evening.
All right. And you've also been given the benefit of the report from BFJ Planner dated April 22, 2019?
That's correct.
Okay. Based upon your review, and based upon your knowledge of the application, you have an opinion from a planning perspective with regard to, let's take the C2 variances, whether or not the improvements as, as built, I'm not ready to say as planned, as built further the purposes and development?
Yes, I do.
All right. Can you give the benefit of your opinion to the board?
Certainly. As this board knows, especially since you just heard another application that invoked the C2 context, in my professional opinion, this board would be most comfortable looking at our variance relief as outlined by Mr. Vogt, under the C2 context, which is the flexible C, and that allows this board to consider the benefits versus the detriment, and if, on the whole, our proposal's a better zoning alternative than a strict application of your code, and in my professional opinion, that would be most appropriate for the signs variances that we're seeking. I would also go so far as to say that you could arguably grant, or group, rather, each of the sign variances together. The argument for one is the same as it is for all of them. As you heard earlier in the evening, for the C2 variance under the Kaufman case, we have to show that the relief being sought is grounded in the purposes of zoning, so I'll talk to you about that. It's specific to this piece of property, and I think Mr. Vogt covered that, but I'll talk a bit about that as well, that the benefits outweigh the detriments, and last but not least, perhaps, that the proposal's a better zoning alternative than a strict application of the code. So I was cautioned by our counselor to be brief, so I'll go right into the proofs. In my professional opinion, the purposes of zoning that would be advanced would certainly be subsection A, and it's interesting that the Commissioner asked about the much ado about safety and on-site circulation, but in point of fact, I would submit to Commissioner and the rest of the board, there are some elements of the rebranding that are intended to help the motorist consumer identify the locations on a site, which pumps are going to. So the wedge number, for example, is really important. I think the synergy wave is an interesting way of identifying the pumps even more. So to that point, subsection A, which is the catch-all purposes of zoning, to promote general public health and safety, as mentioned above, again, the general public health and safety in this case might be the maneuverability on the site. Subsection I, which is to promote a desirable visual environment through good civic design. I realize that beauty is an eye of the beholder, but in this instance, it was the very intentional purpose of Exxon and Petroleum to come up with a design that really met their test for what the consumer's looking for, or consumer preference, and ultimately, to come up with a site that is much more appealing, modern, and hopefully, safe. So it's both the aesthetic and the civic design of this particular proposal.
That is the intent of the B1 district on the highway, correct?
That is correct. I'm sorry, I skimmed over that. The purpose of the B1 district commercial highway zone is to promote this type of commercial activity, and so it actually speaks this in the master plan about supporting the businesses in the B1 district through allowing them to modernize and to revitalize their businesses. So in that context, if you were to grant this relief, you would be advancing those purposes. In terms of the benefits versus the detriments, in my professional opinion, there are no detriments. Mr. Vogt talked about the uniqueness of the site, and I realize that the signage plan really is specific to the interior of the site, but if you look at the surrounding area, it really is all highway, business, commercial. We have the three frontages that Mr. Vogt mentioned, and if you were driving along, the only thing you might notice as a passing motorist is that there's a general improvement to the site via the colors and the signage, et cetera, but the real benefits are interior, are the interior of the site. So really, no detriment to the public good, certainly no substantial detriment to the public good. In terms of the impairment to the zone plan, in my professional opinion, there'd be no impairment to the zone plan, the land use element of the reexamination report or the zoning ordinance. The reexamination report does not go into any great detail about this section of Route 46 or this land use, but it does have a few goals, objectives that I thought were instructive, and certainly, we would advance if you were to grant our relief. One, to encourage new development, to take into account, take into account the aesthetic character of the community, in the effort to enhance the visual and aesthetic appearance, and that is actually, in point of fact, the intent of this application is all about modernizing the Exxon station through this rebranding.
I wanted to talk about that for a moment. We, we do acknowledge that there is a brand concept to this. How important is it for there to be a need for a non-residential property owner within this township to upgrade and to modernize from a planning perspective?
Both from a planning perspective and from the pages of your master plan, it's very important. So the reexaminer, reexamination report, excuse me, suggests that it would be important for the non-residentially zoned property owners to either upgrade, modernize, or... property owners to either upgrade, modernize, or improve their sites. And at the time your reexamination report was being drafted, it took into consideration the recession as well and realized that Precipiny had to support its business community through promoting that type of improvement. So for all those reasons, if you were to grant our relief, you would be advancing the purposes of your master plan and not impairing them. So specific to the piece of property, this unique triangular piece of property, it's an island unto itself, in my opinion, the purposes of zoning would be advanced, as I outlined earlier, and last but not least, their benefits would outweigh any detriments. There really are no detriments, either to the public good or impairment to the zone plan.
With that, I would submit the application, Mr. Chairman.
Susan, any questions?
No.
Any members of the board have any questions?
Actually, just one. I want to go back to the thing I said before to the engineer. If that whole red synergy sign were to actually be part of the structure of the pump, would that really count as a sign? I mean, I know it's got wording on it, which it would-
It would under freestanding, perhaps, but it would probably still be a sign.
Right.
The wall sign.
It'd be kind of a wall with some writing on it. But also, in terms of, in this day and age, we have all these things on our apps, and there are so many places now that accept apps but don't really give you instructions as to what they, where they want you to, there'll be just sort of a pad over here you're supposed to figure out. I'm assuming that there'll be some instructions involved in this, along with some advertising.
There are, and you raised two good points. One is that the rebranding was all about the customer experience, and one of the things the applicant learned was it's important to offer that kind of information to the customer. So people like myself, the troglodytes, can figure out exactly how that's used.
I have figured it out, though.
I find it helpful to take a fifth grader with me.
Always.
It's literally, you press the button, it says pay for fuel, you press, you have to be close to the pumps, and then it says choose your tank, and it starts with a number one in a circle, and you just flip until the tank number you're at, you press it, and then there's a button that says you want to authorize a tank, you press that, and all of a sudden that starts authorizing. And you don't even need a receipt because it's already in your phone. It's unbelievable how things-
Sounds like it's-
And I think a lot of the stations are pretty similar.
Less difficult than setting the time on your VCR.
Yes, oh, yeah. I'm not even, I'm not there.
I would just add one other thing to your point about some of the standards, and really, a lot of the signage standards are geared towards, as Council alluded, the more traditional commercial build-out, whether it's a strip mall or a main street sort of downwind. So these signage standards are very unique to the gas stations.
And it's just one other small thing, is I actually, in my mind, with regard to planning, when something is under a canopy, I actually think of it slightly differently than I would of something out in the open. And, because I, this is kind of your selling floor, and there are many things that are allowed in a selling floor that would not be allowed outside as a sign. So I'm just trying to get at the planning flexibility that might be needed to recognize that. I assume that-
There is a lot of literature, one of the desk references we use is the American Planning Association's Planner Advisory Service, or PAS, report, and they have a PAS report called Wall Graphics in the Law, and it gets to your issue about flexibility in sign ordinances such that you contemplate the variety of needs based on the land use. And clearly, to your point, the gas station land use is very different than another land use where there would be no exterior structure or canopy, where the signage has to be there for the motors. Mr. Vogt talked about the height of the Koala Ears signs, for example, really being designed to meet the eye of the motors in the car, and even if they're out of the car, but in a traditional commercial development, you'd want it higher, and that's just not the case for the gas station.
Yeah. Are there any limits on the ability to offer retail products out by the pump? I don't know the magic of the app, if you could pay for your fuel and a case of water-
I'm sure there's a code, probably not under the zoning code, but I'm sure there's something under ordinances that deal with, you mean like the case of water or-
Well, if the retail products are offered at the inside, this is no problem. It's almost like a second transaction.
Right.
I was just asking because we're talking about, it's a selling floor, which is a very good point, and there's not that much room there, and things would get cluttered very quickly, but in a way, you have a captive audience because you already have a customer in the midst of a transaction. So I don't know if there, you know, the magic of apps, do you suddenly add on other products and then it becomes a whole-
Oh, I see. You know, that I don't know whether you can buy anything else on the app other than the fuel. In fact, if you need, let's say washer fluid, usually you'll see that washer fluid usually there, but sometimes you've got to go into the friction for it. That one, I don't know whether you can put that on the app, and I think you have to pay separately.
Had to pay separately for quart of oil.
I think, I think that's the case.
I'll just note in your ordinance, it does address it.
It does.
But also, the variance they received when I was on the Board of Adjustment and I saw this case, umptee umpt years ago, we almost always, and I can't guarantee we did it on this case, put a restriction on the, on the visual impact of any products that you piled in front of your, your pumps.
Right, yeah. I think, I think that is slowly dwindling because every gas station now has a convenience store attached to it.
Right.
I do not know what the relationship is between Exxon and Quick Check, but I doubt that that relationship will survive.
It was only recently changed to Quickmart, it's always on the go.
Yeah, well, there's a store there, and I'm sure that there's-
Interesting conversation, but let's get back to your application.
Yeah, just to answer Mr. Fergeri's question, the ordinance does say that gasoline service stations may provide for retail sale of goods, provided that the building within which they're sold does not exceed 2,500 square feet. So it doesn't seem to contemplate sale of retail goods elsewhere besides a building.
Wall was bigger than 2,500 square feet.
They might have gotten a variance.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I'm sure that was a variance, 4,000 square feet.
Okay.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Your application?
Thank you, Mrs.
Okay.
Members of the public, for Mr. Williams, did we do?
Well, I just wanted to make sure no members of the board have any more questions. Any members of the public have any questions on this application? Mr. Williams. Any comments on this application? Close the public portion, then. Entertain motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, application number 19, spot 505 Petroleum Marketing Group, Exxon, 2359 Route 46, Block 413, Lots 1 and 2. I move that we grant amended preliminary and final site plan with the C variance for the signs. Are there any, did we suggest any?
Any conditions?
We have no conditions.
Yeah. Miracle. I felt like I had to ask.
And one of our standard, one of our standard set of conditions, but we have none that are specific to this application.
It's a little easier when it's already built.
Yeah, well, there is, there is.
Is there a second?
Second at Parrowick.
At Parrowick, seconds, please call her all.
Mr. Parrowick.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Fergeri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Von Aken.
Yes.
Chairman Keller.
Yes.
How many of us remember when Exxon was SO, though?
Yes.
I do.
How about humble?
Sneak in the deep restriction condition?
And it was 24 cents.
Thank you.
Yeah. I was never there for 24 cents. 30 cents, not 24.
Well, I bought the lowest grade available.
Seventy, forty, you couldn't even buy it.
Cheapest. Do you, Susan, do you have any master plans?
Yes, 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 I'm going down.
Here, here.
Well, she sets up, if I can, just for one moment. If we could try to do a little more, better of a job organizing here and waiting on Chairman Keller to call on you, we had a lot of tripping over one another, I thought, tonight. So if you could try to be recognized by the chair before asking your questions or making your statement, I think it would be helpful.
Okay, while they're clearing out, and Susan's setting up five minutes.
You'll remove some of our spontaneity. Where's the fun in that?
As you all know, we have our second public workshop scheduled for June 10th at Precipiny High School, the other high school this time, at 6 o'clock. So we wanted to show you, or give you, actually, more, and give you some time to review things as well, so that we hear back from you before the 10th and know that it's okay to show these things to the public. So basically, what we have tonight, we're going to just give you an update on community engagement. We do have the survey summary, which Taylor will briefly go through, but we have a, you know, a written summary for you, just an update on sort of the last groups, focus groups that we had, and some outreach we did to some of the boards and commissions. We'll talk a little bit about the workshop and how it's going to be set up. Then we have some new revised goals and objectives that I'll go through briefly, and then Noah's going to touch on this, sort of the meat of the package, which is this, which is the issues and opportunities, which is basically some draft recommendations. So we're getting to that point now where we have actual things to show you and discuss with you. We're not going to go through that page by page or even recommendation by recommendation. We want to give you time to take it home and review, and that is your homework, because when we, we're basically going to present that, the goals, the, excuse me, the goals and objectives, yes, but also the issues and opportunities, we're going to present to the public a little bit more visually, but this is what we are anticipating showing. So if there's something in here that you don't want us to show, we want to hear that, and we want to hear if we're not addressing something that you think we should address on the 10th. So we've built in some review period by everybody, but this is now, we're getting to the good stuff. Just on the scheduling, real quick, I didn't attach the schedule this time, just as I thought I could verbally talk about it. You know, our intent basically is, I think, as we've always intended, to take the summer to kind of firm up a lot of the recommendations. I think we may come back to you at some point in the summer and talk about the land use plan, because that's a little bit of a level of detail that we're not at right now. And then come back in the fall and schedule a public hearing. That's kind of the overall schedule. That may be adjusted a little bit. As you know, the housing plan is also happening. The hearing date for that, Ed Snikes is testifying, the fairness hearing for the housing plan in late June. And as part of that settlement agreement and all of that, the township is going to have to adopt some ordinances. I think we may end up having to do a very quick update of your 2014 master plan, so that those ordinances that have to be adopted are consistent. So these are all procedural things that have to happen with the housing plan, which may end up delaying us just a little bit. I'm not worried about that, it just, it obviously has to get done, so if that's where the focus goes, we'll delay the master plan a little bit. But we're still going full steam ahead, otherwise, and I think we'll be ready in the fall to come back with a full draft. So just on item two on your agenda, community engagement follow-up, I'm just going to turn it quickly to Taylor to summarize some of the key things we heard in the survey.
Yes, so if everyone would grab a copy of the survey summary, I realize they all look the same from where I'm sitting in your position. I am going to be brief, you know, and just kind of go through some quick hits. So on page two, if you want to start with the first page, where?
All right, can we just talk about the fact that over 1,000 people took it, which we were happy about, so.
All right, that was on page one. I skipped over my underlying talking points on page one. So it was between, it's late February to early April, and then, yeah, over 1,000. So this document is organized by topic, not 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Some of them happen to fall that way, but you follow the headings, so organized by topic. The first is general residency questions, that's on page two. Just wanted to point out the first, you know, heading, 97% of participants or survey respondents live in Precipiny, so, you know, again, this is not scientific, but it's a good, okay, most of these questions are coming from residents, most of the answers are going to come from residents. The second point, on page five, if you flip over, that's going to go, that is an employment and income question, that's the first heading on page five. Where do you work? I just thought it was interesting. You know, the first four options on this chart are New Jersey, not in Precipiny, Morris County, not in Precipiny, Precipiny, or not working retired, all 20% about, but then general, New Jersey was 27%. So just kind of giving a flavor of where people work. Questions, or point three on the next page, which is page six, the transportation questions, I'm not going to go through all of these, but these are, where do you experience traffic congestion in Precipiny? You'll see there's the big roads that we all know, Route 46, 202, 1053, but then people did get into some more detailed descriptions of local roads, Vale, Beverwick, Precipiny, and then this very specific, I have, I see traffic here and here at this time, and I put those in the other local roads section. Continuing on to page nine, page nine. What specific issues to your neighborhood do you think should be addressed in this plan? These are different headings, but the first are different paragraphs, they generally revolve around maintenance, traffic and pedestrian safety, schools, you know, overcrowding, traffic, parking, Main Street and aesthetics of North Beverwick, which is general town aesthetics, and then people wanted neighborhood paths, paths like the different things. Continuing on, so just the next page, page 10, highest priorities for housing. The highest clear favorite was keep existing scale of homes, but then the other ones, promote sustainable design, preserve older buildings, and improve code enforcement. If you look at this chart, and this will happen in the rest of the survey summary as well, these add up to more than 100%. I realize we probably should have put that beside the question heading.
Because you could choose more than one.
Because you could choose more than one answer, so people could do multiples. But that's going to be repeated. If something adds up to more than 100, that's why.
So I thought on this one, it was interesting that 16% wanted more affordable housing. I recall from our public workshop in November, that number was very low from the participants at the workshop, but here, I think it was a little bit of a higher priority for at least the people who took this survey, which is interesting.
So this is a separate survey, it's not a combination of the-
No, this is a standalone survey.
On page 13, one page later, the third, the very bottom chart, so what are your biggest priorities for economic development? Again, there was four, you know, kind of at the top that were over 15% responses, attracting major employers and promoting a range of uses, emphasize sustainability, and then support small business and artists. The next page, page 14, at the very top, what are your biggest priorities for parks and recreation? The clear favorite, maintain and upgrade facilities. Second, also clear, connect parks with a greenway, and then increasing, you know, increasing open space, programming, and building new parks. Not going to go over the question beneath that, but those are specific improvements we got from respondents, you know, this bench is broken, this play, volleyball court, I remember, volleyball court was removed, and this person really wanted another high-quality volleyball park, volleyball court.
We've got one in my neighborhood, so.
Yeah, we got a good one there.
Yeah.
And so, lastly, I thought this was interesting, you know, open-ended, sorry, this is page 16, page 16, the very bottom, which is open-ended, what should the township do to promote more civic engagement? You know, a lot of what we've heard and discussed at these meetings are communication, and that came clear. I think, you know, people like to say they want to be more involved maybe than they, you know, we're, I get, because people said specifically live streaming town meetings. Someone said, I have a young child, I can't come to these town meetings, but I would love it if we set up the iPad or something I could watch while I'm clicking. You know, that sounds interesting. If you did that to every town meeting, you'd be a very engaged citizen. We hope that happens, but it's a great idea. Some of my overall other great ideas, just more communication, physical newsletters, a monthly newsletter that talks about, here's all the things with all the different communities, spotlight on, you know, this bagel store, whatever, just some other ways that people can get involved. Transparency, having agendas published before meetings. I think some people felt that they didn't know what was being discussed. If I knew what was there, I would have come, but I found out afterwards and, you know, it didn't make people feel really involved. Those are my big, my eight takeaways. There's much more here, but we've got a lot to talk about tonight, so I wanted to just boom, boom, boom.
Yeah, I thought this is a, you know, take some time and look at it. I thought it was a nice, kind of an interesting snapshot of what at least the 1,000 people who took this thing. And again, it's not scientific, it's self-selecting, but it's an additional data point for us, kind of reinforce some of the things that we've been hearing, but then also, you know, you hear a little bit different. So we're going to, and already have, kind of pull this into what we're looking at in terms of recommendations. So take some time with it, and let us know, we'll give you the same deadline for this as well, if you have any questions. Did you want to talk about this?
Yes, and so the public workshop, as Susan mentioned, June 10th, 6:00 p.m. at Precipiny High. So we've got both high schools covered, people can't say we're one-sided. After, in the final master plan, we're going to choose a winner, that's the last page. But, so we're thinking four stations, so it's an open house concept, so we have boards, kind of like they set up here, but, you know, similar. So set up boards, you'll see later in our issues and recommendations plan that I talked about, there's kind of eight chapters or eight sections, and we probably double up, so two each. The four stations, so three of us, and then we were finally asked one of you guys. But people kind of, it's great, people can kind of walk through, add sticky notes, and it's an informal discussion. What do you think about that? I don't like this, and we say, why don't you like it? What did you like instead? Sticky notes, happy face. It's like, as I said, it's like old school Yelp in a way, the real-time feedback, but very analog, and it tends to work great. And at the end, either we or someone else will kind of summarize what we've heard.
Yeah, it's a little, it's similar to the roundtables, except that instead of sitting down and talking in depth about, you know, you choose one topic, you don't have to choose, you can just browse the, all of the boards, and, you know, take as long as you need. And it's more, it's less about like back and forth communication and more about, hey, here's our ideas, let us know what you think. And so then we'll present back at the end of the night and, you know, summarize that.
It also avoids certain people pontificating throughout their session.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And as we do these sessions, we kind of work from big ideas down to kind of a more detailed oriented conversations. So this format allows us to kind of get into the details with participants, whereas we can't do that in a larger format, you know, in a town hall style.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, and then also, we did get to, we submitted, we sent out a letter to the various advisory committees in Precipiny to ask them for formal recommendations. So far, we did get two responses, one from the environmental advisory committee and another from the historic preservation advisory committee. And we've incorporated those comments into our recommendations, which I'll go through soon. But we just wanted to hand out those documents so you're aware of them, and, you know, feel free to comment on those, but we wanted to kind of bring you up to speed with the information that we received, so.
And we're going to circle back to the boards that we haven't heard back from. One in particular that I want to make sure gives us their comments, if they will, is the traffic advisory committee. We, you know, we met with them, we had a discussion, but we'd like a little bit more, you know, detail in some of what they're looking at.
Right, and since we met with you last, we have had a lot of meetings with all of the focus groups, so we kind of checked that off of our list. We've also met with Justin Lizza, we met with Water today.
Yeah, I spoke with Water today.
And, you know, a whole host of different meetings with stakeholders, and we feel like we're in a really good place right now as far as getting an understanding of the baseline recommendations that we can present to you and then ultimately to the public.
So I'm just going to spend a couple moments, let me find the document that we're going to. It's the goals and objectives. Yeah, it's the one that's printed horizontally. So this was sort of my little task. I took the 2014 plan, which has twelve goals. There's a set of objectives which are essentially straight from the municipal land use law. We're not touching those, they're fine. Your plan should at a minimum be consistent with the municipal land use law. But then there's a set of twelve goals, which are clearly tailored to parts of Precipiny, and each one has a policy statement. And this is what I look at whenever I look at master plan consistency. So the first step was kind of thinking about how we could maybe trim some things, combine some things, clarify. And so the first two pages of this document just lists the proposed twelve goals. It's funny that they, the new list ends up being twelve, too. But then the next one, this is a table that shows you a comparison of the existing recommendations, the proposed change, and kind of why. So that's what I'm kind of going to go through a little bit. And some, some of the orders changed, just because we wanted to make it consistent with the order that we're using in the issues and opportunities section. But first and foremost, the first goal is all about housing in the neighborhoods. You'll see it, the existing one, this is number one, is quite long, which is try to shorten a little bit and get to kind of the meat of it, which is really about preserving the scale and the character of your existing neighborhoods. The next one that we have is about the environment, and there's sort of a catch-all environmental one, and then there's one currently that's only about Troy Meadows. We combine them, but essentially they're the same, but we're just putting them in one goal that kind of covers environmental features. The next goal is about, you know, providing a balanced housing supply. We've just kind of beefed that up a little bit, to make it more clear what that means, that it's, you know, it's different ages, just different incomes, different household types, you know, really trying to meet the needs of a lot of the different people. There were, the next goal, there were, there are two goals right now that deal, one deals with buffers and one deals with transition areas. They both are really about, you know, moderating the change in, you know, in one intensity of a zone from another to another. So I've combined those, they're essentially saying similar things. There were two separate goals about preserving retail and then preserving office. We kind of put those together, preserving commercial, whether it's retail, whether it's corporate office, whether it's light industry, that, you know, it's really trying to strengthen those types of uses in the township's land use plan. Then the next one is the transitional uses, which has been combined, as I said. On the next page, there's an existing goal about new development should take into account aesthetics, just added in redevelopment, and that's small R redevelopment, but basically just making it clear that, just because it already exists doesn't mean you can't improve the aesthetic. Beefed up the traffic and pedestrian circulation goal a little bit, to talk about what, you know, what that's really about. It's a whole range of issues that we want to try to mitigate. There was a goal in here about supporting the state plan. We just kind of broadened that, it's the state, you know, regional, county, regional would, that would be Highlands, basically, once the township becomes conforming to that, it's catching all those other plans. The one on water supply, we didn't change. I think that's important and didn't need to be changed. Again, Troy Meadows is combined with the other environmental goal, and the next one on corporate research offices has been combined. And then there are three new goals, because we felt that these needed to be addressed sort of on their own. One is about open space, and it's just making sure that there's a range of open space, passive and active, for really all residents have access to that, and that it's well-connected. Next one is about municipal facilities, making sure that they're adequate, and they're efficient, and they're effectively serving the community. And then the next one is about really historical arcs and cultural resources, which is something that we've been hearing a lot about in our meetings. So at the end, there's still twelve goals, because there's three new ones, and then we've kind of mixed and matched and merged others. But again, take some time and look at these. I'm working on policy statements that are supportive of these, working from your existing ones. Not there yet. Trying to make them as concise as possible, because the current ones are wordy, I will say. So if we can't say what we need to say in a couple paragraphs, we should maybe revisit that. But yeah, so take some time on these goals, let us know what you think. And I'm going to turn it to Noah and look at the big document.
Sure. Okay, so I'm going to talk about the issues and opportunities document here. This is kind of the, really, kind of the meat of what the master plan will recommend ultimately. A lot of what Susan was talking about, the goals and the policies, those will come up front, and those are kind of a little more of the framework, and also fulfill some statutory requirements for the municipal land use laws. For the layperson, it will probably sound a little bit, you know, gobbledygooky, this is like.
Walky.
Yeah, a little walky. This document here really kind of explains in layperson terms what we're recommending in the plan. How did we get to this document? Well, we listened a lot to all of the various stakeholders, whether it be from the community at the public meeting, through the online survey, through focus groups. Anytime we had one of those meetings, we had a meeting summary and listed all of the issues and opportunities that we heard. And then we grouped those all together, grouped those into themes, and then started to see what ideas came out. And then so it was a bit of a process of kind of taking all of that chaos, bringing it in, and trying to make sense of it. And so the document here is, it's, you know, it's fairly, you know, it's about twenty to thirty pages. Ultimately, probably at the next, at the public meeting, what we'd like to do is go through a lot of these recommendations, but we'll try to illustrate the ideas to the best degree that we can. We're not going to present this document to the public to review. We really want to make it user-friendly. So I'm going to go through some of the big, kind of the big ideas, and, you know, maybe we'll spur some conversation.
Yeah, and can I just jump in?
Yep, sure.
You know, one required element of your master plan is the land use plan, and your current 2014 plan has that. And so right now, there's not really a standalone land use section, because it's going to be driven by almost everything else.
Right.
So there's going to be a lot of these recommendations that touch on zoning or, you know, existing land use or change land use. And so that's why after the workshop, we're going to, you know, come back and think about what that all means for the land use plan, and that'll be what we talk about with you next time.
Yeah, and just to add to that, this is very much a working document. There are, we imagine that there will be recommendations that will, you know, be added, recommendations that might be deleted, and.
And you can see that some are more fully formed than others.
Yeah, exactly. So this is, we just wanted to show you where we're at. So just to start at the beginning, you know, we organize it by chapter, so we have transportation and circulation first. There's no necessarily rhyme or reason to why that's first, but the first one, improving efficiency of the roadway network. We had a long conversation with Justin Lizza to really work through all of the priorities that his department has for the roadway network. We looked at the prior circulation element to see what had been done and what still needs to be done. So we have a rough list of priority projects for the township to consider. We're also in the process of kind of developing a heat map for where problem areas are with regard to the roadway network. So that's something that we can show to the public as well. So we think this will be really helpful, and it's just kind of an itemized list, something that can really guide the township. So the first couple of pages is a long list of specific priority projects with regard to the roadway network. I'm not going to go through them, you know, one by one. Moving onwards, one of the things that we see as kind of the next step for the township to do would be to develop the circulation master plan elements. While we will identify specific issues, we think that it is important to update the element to really refine some of those projects into implementable actions that the township can take.
The last one was twenty, two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five, right. So it's been almost fifteen years since the last one was done. And some of those projects were completed, some weren't, and, you know, patterns in the township have changed. We'll also want to reflect other aspects, such as, you know, potential future development that might occur as for the housing plan and just other regional trends. So we think that, you know, it's appropriate to consider a circulation element at this point. Other, you know, big themes, we talked about traffic calming, traffic calming particularly in those residential neighborhoods that suffer from cut-through traffic. That's something that we heard from a lot of residents. Improving sidewalk connectivity. And one aspect with that, I just wanted to bring your attention to a map that I passed So this is, this is a map that we created, and we gave it to Justin Lizza, and, you know, giving it to you now just to kind of take a look. What we did was we identified all of the roads that had sidewalks, either one sidewalk or sidewalk, excuse me, sidewalk on one side or sidewalk on both sides. And then we looked at gaps in the sidewalk network. And our priority areas were arterial roads and roads near schools and other pedestrian connectors. And so what you can see in this map are, those red areas are areas where there are no sidewalks, that should be considered or at least looked at as priority areas for sidewalks. And so it doesn't necessarily mean that we need, you know, that the township needs to create sidewalks for all those areas, but it's just a, you know, kind of the first step in looking at the sidewalk implementation plan. The next step would be to really look at those areas to see what's feasible and, you know, where opportunities might exist.
And it would be helpful, too, when an applicant comes in that's in one of those areas. It gives this board, if this is in the plan, gives you a little bit more leverage to say, hey, our master plan says there should be, you know, probably be a sidewalk in this area, we'd like you to put it in.
This map also identifies a couple of opportunities for potential future walking trails. We're still looking into this, and there might be others. One, as you're most likely aware, is, you know, a trail around the reservoir. We know that the township is in conversations with, in conversations with Jersey City and the state about that. We've also spoken to Justin about a potential off-road path along the southern portion of Knoll Park and the Country Club. There's, might be an opportunity along the railroad just west Debra Road. So we're looking at different opportunities. These might be big, long-term ideas, but just certainly things to consider for the future. We heard connectivity with off-road trails and walking was a really important aspect that people wanted to see in the master plan. So we wanted to reflect that.
Just one really quick note.
Yeah.
Your map misidentifies one of the roads as Glenwood Avenue when it's actually Mid Vale.
Oh, okay.
In Lake Hiawatha.
Okay. Lake Sixteen.
I spent ten years living on Glenwood, so it jumped right out of me.
Okay. Okay, so I'll walk through some of them. Another recommendation was identify and support access improvements to public transit, provide a system of linkages connecting neighborhood open space throughout Precipiny. That's kind of what I was talking about before. And then plan for safety improvements with new development. And that, a lot of that has to do with the site plan approval process and making sure there are adequate sidewalks and access and egress safety considerations. The next page addresses economic development. A lot of these ideas, we'll probably go into a little bit more detail when we flesh out the land use plan, but some of the general ideas were to encourage redevelopment and then fill development in existing commercial and office areas that are vacant or in need of reinvestment. Support the commercial corridors to help them remain competitive in a challenging retail environment and better serve the surrounding neighborhoods. Invest in the street, in streetscape upgrades along neighborhood-oriented commercial corridors, including North Beverwick Road, Precipiny's Main Street. That really was the focus of the economic development focus group that we had. North Beverwick really seemed to kind of dominate the conversation, so we want to make sure that we specifically address that in the plan. And some of the recommendations that we have include streetscape improvements, placemaking improvements, ways to facilitate reinvestment, private investment, such as facade upgrades or potentially redevelopment of some of the properties there. Wayfining signage to help identify North Beverwick. We know that the business improvement district wasn't a popular idea, but we included in there as a potential long-term opportunity as a way for the corridors to self-fund some of those improvements that might help with some of those economic development efforts. There's some other ideas in here, so we encourage you to look through and see what's relevant.
Yeah, and you'll see that it's not just North Beverwick that we've looked at in terms of streetscape improvements. I mean, I think that that could certainly be a starting point, and maybe provide a little bit of a model for other corridors in the township, like Precipiny Road, Halsey Road, and both of those around the Lake Park-Sipney area. They're similar in a lot of ways, North Beverwick, they're not quite as sort of Main Street-ish, but there's certainly an improvement, improvements that could happen along those corridors. And they do serve the surrounding neighborhoods.
The next one was to pursue economic development opportunities that attract visitors from throughout the region. So larger, larger economic development ideas, and some of the things that we heard was, is there a potential for a small convention center? There's a lot of hotel space in Precipiny. This would bring in visitors, especially on weekends when traffic isn't as much of a concern. That kind of also, along the same lines, there's potential for hosting summer regional sports tournaments. We did hear that in a number of meetings. And then also promoting Precipiny's history and equitourism. There are a number of assets here that really aren't known not just by visitors, but by residents in Precipiny. And so that can be done with simple ways, such as signage, and also other marketing efforts in partnership with the township and other local community-based organizations. Another one on the next page that has to do with this is developing a consistent branding and signage program for Precipiny. Now, we see this as, you know, it might seem kind of ephemeral, you know, it's just branding, but we heard from almost everyone that they feel more tied to their local neighborhoods than they do to Precipiny. And we see this as an opportunity to create a sense of identity for Precipiny as a whole, and it doesn't necessarily have to take away from neighborhoods. It could be Precipiny is a township of, you know, of neighborhoods, and so you have the big brand, big umbrella is Precipiny, and you have a smaller brand as individual neighborhoods to help people understand where they are and where they're going. And I think, you know, I think it's, it might seem like a simple idea, but it's something that we think could really help answer some of those questions, or at least start to create a sense of identity. We included that. The next one was undertake zoning, oh, sorry.
Do you want me to talk about this one?
Sure, yes.
What page are you on?
This is page thirteen.
Thirteen.
So this is starting to think about some of the ideas that might be in the land use plan. When you really start to dig into the zoning, there's. there's, there's like six or eight business districts. There's half a dozen office districts. Um, and they start, they really start to be very much alike. Um, a lot of them are almost identical in terms of uses and in terms of area and bulk. Um, there's just, there are so many. Now, I think our, our approach is not to touch the residential zones for the most part, um, in terms of rezoning or anything like that. Um, but on the commercial side, we think there's a lot of consolidation that could potentially occur. Um, you have several highway commercial zones which are very similar. Um, and so I think some of those could be merged. Um, keep sort of a, sort of a corridor commercial zone, um, where it's not a highway, but it's not really a neighborhood zone. That could be like Parsippany Road and Tiber Road. Um, then there could be a neighborhood business zone that looks at some of those sort of local nodes. Um, this is an issue that I, I, I would like to change. The dual zones, you have a couple of areas in town where it's a light industrial zone and also residential zone. Um, and I think the intent was it could be either or, but in practice, um, there's at least one case where it's both on the same property. It's, it's a house and then there's an, an industrial business all happening in one property. I don't think that was ever the intent and I'm not sure that's what we want. Um, there's another area that is, um, RCW, the Recreation Conservation Wildlife Zone, and also residential.
Mm-hmm.
But it's a neighborhood. I mean, so it clearly is not going to be conservation. So, it's kind of like, let's pick one. Uh, and if it creates a non-conformity, then we'll try to manage that, but, um, hopefully we can not create a non-conformity, kind of simplify things. Um, the light industrial zones, I think are very, very similar. If the power will be merged, um, similarly with the corporate office zones. And then you, you have these sort of, um, I don't know, one-off zones, which if you read the ordinance, it's clearly as a, as a result of a lawsuit. Usually in connection with a prior affordable housing plan. Um, anytime where the, or, the actual ordinance is in your code, um, and it has to mention litigation. Anyway, those have all been built out. Um, and, and you know a lot of them, the Mazda Book was one. You know, they were developed for a particular point in time, um, deal with a particular issue. They're built out. Um, at some point, it would be nice to bring them back into conventional zoning and make them as part of just a, they're usually office. Um, so we, I want to look at that. Uh, that, that requires a little bit more thought and probably legal, legal, uh, opinion as well. Um, you know, obviously not creating a non-conformity, but maybe trying to just clean up a little bit. Your code is five hundred pages, so, um, we'd like to do some streamlining. But anyway, those are some of the things we're thinking about for the land use plan. It's not all-inclusive, uh, and, and we, we want to spend a little bit more time talking about that with you guys, but just wanted to telegraph where we're going.
Uh, for open space and recreation, a lot of the recommendations were things that we got from the Parks and Recreation, uh, Focus Group. So, that is just letting you know, when you look through that, that, this, this section, um, recommendations came from that meeting. Uh, we did hear, um, you know, uh, kind of going back to what I was talking about with the sidewalks, that there is, um, a desire for some kind of comprehensive trail network throughout Parsippany. Um, and we don't necess, we don't really have the, uh, ability to do that in this effort, but we think that it would be valuable to have a comprehensive trail plan um, that, that identifies where the trails are and then where there might be opportunities to connect those, uh, connect parks, connect other resources and, and really kind of look into detail on those specific opportunities. Uh, the next one is, uh,
Page sixteen, right?
Sorry, yes, thank you. Sixteen. Uh, improve communication and outreach process for parks and recreation activities. Um, we heard this, uh, at the Focus Group meeting. A lot of people said that there are various programs that are happening simultaneously. Um, there's not always information about which fields are open and when. Um, and if there was a, a calendar, a township-wide calendar for all of those public events, uh, it would really go a long way. Um, and so we see this as maybe part of a larger branding effort as, you know, communication, uh, transparency, openness, and, you know, really promoting also all of those parks and recreation assets um, that are in Parsippany. So, these, these recommendations sometimes go hand in hand, but we, you know, we're kind of calling them on separately. Next one, uh, environmental conservation and sustainability. Um, support the conservation of Troy Meadows and other environment, uh, environmentally sensitive areas. Uh, this also was a recommendation from the Environmental Advisory Committee, uh, which we submitted to you earlier. Uh, one of those recommendations, uh, from that, um, document was to produce a complete natural resource inventory. Um, and so we, we put that, we included that as well as a number of other recommendations that they included. Uh, reduce impervious surfaces across the board and employ green infrastructure techniques. Um, this is just an effort to, you know, as, as it's, it's pretty straightforward, you know, reduce the amount of asphalt in, in the township and, uh, you know, look at ways to detain and slow down stormwater.
And recharge the asphalt.
Recharge the asphalt.
Is it the sort of thing that we should be considering that whenever we have a commercial application for putting in a, a big parking lot?
Hopefully.
There should be a-
That's, that's going to be the new stormwater reg in New Jersey eventually.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and things like requiring there to be landscape islands in your parking lots. You don't, you don't have that right now. Um, and, and it's, it's a pretty common, uh, standard for, you know, every ten spaces you have to have the size of one space landscape, something like that. Of course, no one likes it because of plowing, at least the owners, but many other towns do it.
Do other communities have, uh, any, any, do they, do they provide any type of the cleaning service for, is it, I, I get-
Storm drains?
Well, I say per, well, there's always that, at least in Lake Parsippany, but is it, uh, I have the term right, pervious asphalt, the draining, right? We have that at our church and it's been cleaned once and we had a meeting yesterday and so we don't need, you know, we have, we don't even know who to go to to clean it. And we want to clean it.
Yeah.
The mayor's action center.
But does, does the town have the ability to clean pervious asphalt?
My understanding is we don't. We have whatever the vehicle is.
See, nobody knows.
Yeah, there's vendors out there that, they vacuum it and whatnot. Um, surprisingly, it's, it's working pretty well even though they don't clean them. But, uh, yeah, there are vendors that, that do that.
Because I was gonna say, if we make people put it in, should we be helping them clean it?
Yeah, as far as when you put these in, there's an operation maintenance man that they should be by statute, should be following the maintenance schedule for cleaning. A- any, any stormwater management from a detention basin to forest basin.
You have to maintain it just like you would an elevator.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, just, uh, moving on, uh, page twenty, the next page, um, dealing with protecting the water supply. And I did meet this afternoon with John Riwoka, your, um, Water Utility Superintendent. So, there's some more information that'll come into this. Um, he gave me a really good sense of kind of where things are. And there's some, uh, some big, big upgrades that need to happen, or not even upgrades, but, uh, maintenance. Uh, fairly costly things. So, uh, things that the township needs to look at on a long-term capital improvement-type basis. Um, it's wells, but also more importantly, probably the pipes. Um, you have about two hundred and eighty miles of pipes, uh, water pipes here in Parsippany. And, uh, basically anything before the sixties or seventies is cast iron. And that's why you have a lot of water main breaks. Uh, so those all need to be replaced over time. So, um, you know, it's not an easy thing, but if we get it in the plan, the township can start, you know, planning for it in terms of budgeting, things like that. Um, looking at water supply, um, John talked about some, some things that they're looking at to secure additional supply. And then another piece of this is dealing with Highlands. So, um, I think as most of you know, the township is, is trying to restart the process of Highlands conformance, um, with the Highlands Regional Master Plan. You are in the planning area, not the preservation area. It's not the strictest, um, area to be in, but, um, there's some things that have to happen. And I've been meeting sort of concurrently with Highlands. Um, and actually a natural resources inventory is sort of required for that as well. But, you know, a benefit of being in the Highlands is that they can give you now grants. Um, and a big one would be to come up with, uh, you know, a water plan. Um, and, and so they, they would fund the study that would be required to do that. So, that's, that's kind of a benefit of Highlands here. Um, so there's probably going to be more to say on water, but, um, but I think it's, it's an important issue, certainly for looking at future development.
Uh, the next one was to promote energy efficient and sustainable patterns of development. Uh, we might talk a little bit more of that in the land use plan as well. You know, looking at how we can encourage, um, green buildings, design, um, other ways, you know, this kind of, um, kind of dovetails with some of the other green infrastructure, um, ideas we were talking about, but, um, increasing solar, making that, um, facilitating that with regard to the building code, um, and other measures. Uh, on the next page, on page twenty-two, um, this is more of, um, uh, working with community groups in the township to promote environmental awareness and education. Um, we see it as, as a two-part, not just the regulations, but also just, just general education campaign. So, one would be, and this is something that we would need to, to discuss, um, with you all, would be to formalize and strengthen the role of the Environmental Advisory Committee. Uh, we heard from them that they feel a little bit disconnected and they don't have, uh, a, a say in, um, the developments that, you know, come down the line. And they requested or, or asked that they be involved to some degree, um, potentially, um, in an advisory role to the planning board or maybe the zoning, uh, zoning board. So,
It could be as simple as, as allowing them the opportunity to comment on, on major developments, um, like, like Parks and Forest she does, you know, like, like other township departments do.
They're not, they're not currently on the checklist, I don't think.
I don't think so.
So, it was just, it was just an idea from them and so we, we put it in. Um, another one was to work towards a sustainable Jersey certification and create a green team. Um, so I don't know if this is something that the township has considered, but other municipalities in the area have done that.
We used to be and, and they want to do that again.
Oh, great, terrific, okay. Uh, and then the other one is kind of not fully baked. There are other, other ideas that we're working on, so we'll, we'll continue to add to this list. Um, moving on to page twenty-three. Um, reducing negative environmental impacts by adopting actions and strategies for waste reduction, recycling and tapping into renewable energy. Um, the next one is reduce impacts and risk from stormwater flooding.
Did you all know about the Recycle Coach app? I just found this out.
Oh, right, sorry.
It's kind of, it's kind of fun. Uh, the township is already doing it. Um, so I just look on, somewhere on the township's website. But it, you can download it to your phone and it tells you like when, when your recycling scheduling, schedule is. Um, and I think as you all know, Morris County has really cracked down on what you can and cannot put in the bin. Um, it has definitely been a learning experience for me. Um, and, but it, you know, it gives you that, you know, that information. And so that's, that's kind of something nice that the township is already doing, through education.
Um, and then the last one was reduce impacts and risk from stormwater flooding. Uh, we'll probably have some more specific recommendations for that. Uh, but we, we don't have any specific ones at this moment. Um, okay, uh, moving on to page twenty-four, housing in neighborhoods. Um, the first one has to do with, um, uh, general character and, and aesthetics and quality of life of Parsippany's single-family residential neighborhoods. So, the protection and enhancement of those areas. Um, we will deal with this, I think, also in the land use plan. One of the things that, um, Susan may have mentioned was reviewing, uh, residential districts to revise zonings to make those areas more, uh, conforming or just conforming. Uh, one of those areas is the Mount Tiber area. The, the properties, the, the housing there is obviously very specific to that area and the zoning.
You can't.
What's that?
I don't think you can. I mean, you're talking about almost historical buildings now, but-
Well, I think what we're saying, what we're saying is, uh, the zoning, um, doesn't reflect the building that is there.
The reality, yeah.
So, revising the zoning to make those buildings conforming.
Yeah, so basically, I think it's in an R-three zone and so, but nothing there is conforming. So, what we've heard is that if you want to do anything, you need a variance.
But many are built on lot lines. Some are built into towns right away.
Right. So, so I, I think the vision is that, you know, it would be a sort of a specialized zone that would basically preserve that um, and not make them sort of beholden to a nineteen fifties or earlier, you know, kind of, kind of, uh, zoning pattern. Because it's not that and not, and it shouldn't be. You should, you know, you should keep it what it is. You should also allow the owners, uh, the ability to, you know, make minor upgrades. Like, I was there this afternoon and most of them are in very, very good shape. But there's a few that are, you know, needs, need a little bit of, of help. And, you know, you have to think that the expense of coming to the zoning board for variance, uh, it might be a deterrent to some of that.
As soon as, the Tiber is an historic area, isn't it?
It's a historic district.
District.
But in, this is in terms of zoning. So, it's really ju- to try, try to come up with a zoning treatment that allows what's there, uh, preserves it, doesn't create a burden.
When I was on the Board of Adjustment, we would often get, oh, I want to put a compressor for my air conditioner in and I have to get a C variance to, to do this.
Yeah, so.
For, for a dozen things. Not, not just side yard or something like that. It, you know, it's impervious. It's, you know.
My side yard, also your side yard.
Right, right. Yeah, no, it's, it's a very interesting place.
Into the, into the town right away.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, we're still looking at that. Um, so the next one, I'm on page twenty-five now, um, still with the housing. And so, this is one that I, I think we want to make sure you're reviewing this and getting your input because it deals with multifamily. And, and right now, the policy that's in the two thousand and fourteen plan is pretty strong, no more multifamily. Uh, and I think that was a reaction to the fact that you have so many garden apartment complexes. But, but what that means is that in your current zoning code, there is no, no apartment zone. There is no modern apartment zone. Um, there's not even a mixed-use zone. So, if you're, and, and you do have developers who are out there and are interested, um, which means everything is done through the zoning board. So, the, the interest in building mixed-use or apartments is not going away. Uh, and so what that means is that everybody is coming through with a used variance. So, we think it's worthwhile to think about where it might be appropriate to have apartments. Um, and to have more control over that. To, you know, to kind of focus in where, you know, where you think they might be appropriate. Um, maybe it's close to the parking rides, um, close to where there's already commercial development nearby that you can walk to. Um, so you don't have these sort of pockets. Not to say that people won't want to put apartments where they already own land and, and they're free to go to the zoning board to do that. Uh, so that's just something that we're kind of thinking about the land use element, the land use plan. Um, and then we've also been thinking about what to do with the garden apartments, which, um, many of them are not in great shape. Um, many of them are nearing the end of their functional life and they have not had much done to them. So, is there a way to maybe incentivize some of those owners to, over time, it's a long-term process because you have tenants in them, um, you know, systematically kind of empty out a building, you know, let the leases expire and replace, you know, building by building. And one incentive to do that is maybe to give them another story, to make them have the ability to do three stories. Get some, uh, it's a more efficient, more modern, uh, type of, uh, you know, floor plans. You could get the dumpsters inside the buildings uh, as most modern apartments do. And that could start to address some of those impacts that you, you know, you see in those garden apartments. Uh, because without some kind of incentive, um, you know, I'm just not sure what, what the future is for those, that, you know, they will continue to age uh, and, and the maintenance is, is high and the upgrading is not really happening. So, it's kind of something that we're thinking about is not saying no, just a blanket no to multifamily, but really thinking more in a nuanced way, how you can get what you want.
It, it's going to be very difficult because in order to give them that extra story, we'd have to probably also give them a level of underground garage.
Yeah, right. And, and that might, I mean, it's expensive for them, but that might be preferable to, you know, cut down.
Yeah, but that means all of a sudden you're a two-story, it's not
Yeah.
one extra story. And there, there are locations where that kind of makes sense, actually. I, I don't have a problem in, in certain locations because they're not going to be interfering with nearby residents. I mean, we've,
Right.
the one right down here probably could get that. And that would be a good thing. The one, uh, off of New Road, not north of New Road, yeah, off of, off of, uh,
Rutgers.
Oh, yeah. Not Rutgers Village, but the one that's hidden in the, by Lizza's, uh, engineering.
Oh, yes, yeah.
You know, places like that, nobody would ever know. They could make it another three stories and nobody would notice.
So, I, I don't think it's going to be a blanket, we, because they're all, I think they're all R-six or R-five. We zone all of them to allow that. I think we need to think a little bit more about where, like you said, it is appropriate.
Well, that's, you see, that's my point, is that, is that it's going to have to be done place by place. Because they're, they're going to be like, Noel Gardens should not be raised an extra story.
Noel Gardens is so giant that the impact would be huge
Yeah.
to do it there. So, you have, we have to think about that. And so I just, I wanted to raise it tonight because I want you all to be thinking a little bit about it and we should talk in greater detail, um, later in the summer when we get into these land use issues. But if you, you have some thoughts on that, we should be thinking about that.
Colonial Heights, it's right next to Colonial Heights on Parsippany Road. It's right next to two eighty-seven and within walking distance of the Green Hill area.
Yep.
That would probably be acceptable to raise a little bit.
And I think it's one of the older complexes.
Yeah.
So, just some ideas there. Um, the next one, I'm on twenty-six. This is, it's kind of a placeholder. It's essentially just incorporating the housing plan that we know is coming and will be adopted before this plan is done. And so we may end up having more of a summary. We don't want to rehash the entire supportive housing plan. It's essentially just this plan, you recognize it. Everything should be consistent. Um, the next one deals with quality of life, code enforcement issues, which will be more detailed than we might normally get into on a master plan. But we hear, we keep hearing about the cats.
Oh, my God, I have so many cats.
It's a really big issue. Um, and, and, you know, there's, there's,
Six and then four.
There's a lot of things to look at, that. Um, regulation of short-term rentals, so that's Airbnb. Um, I talked about this some months ago with Mike and Jerry, your, um, code enforcement officer. At the time, he was a little bit concerned about it. I think he's not as concerned as he was. You have some listings if you go on Airbnb or VRVO, but I don't think it's creating, you know, huge impacts. Um, if certain neighborhoods started to see more, you, you probably would see that and, you know, more cars, trash, noise. Just something to kind of think about, um, Just something to kind of think about if it becomes an issue. Okay, so the next one, next section on twenty-seven is community facilities.
Sure. The first one was evaluate space constraints for existing municipal services. We heard when we met with the various agencies that the police department, OEM, EMS, and the DPWN here at City Hall or town, at Parsippany Town Hall. There are space constraints basically everywhere. And it might be worthwhile to look into, in the future, to see if there are some opportunities to consolidate some of those, some of those facilities. Potentially into one municipal complex. So it's, it's really a long-term idea, but we, we did hear that there was kind of universal need for space. So the recommendations have to do with addressing that. The next one is maintain and improve township utilities, emphasizing environmental protection, health and safety. These are kind of just, you know, basic stuff, like filling potholes, burying utility lines where possible, encouraging water efficient fixtures. So we're going to kind of list basic, you know, basic things that the township could be doing with regard to regular maintenance. Collaborate with the Board of Education to plan for future space needs. We don't have a specific recommendation, but we did hear some concern about elementary schools in, you know, certain areas. Such as the western portion of the township where they might not have the same kind of access to elementary schools. We understand that there's not necessarily the desire to do that right away, but this should be something that the township continues to monitor. And to see where, you know, where projections go for, for school enrollment. Improve public information sharing, give feedback, I think this speaks to what I talked about before. We did hear from, from, on the, on the surveys that the town halls were really popular. So a lot of the comments were more town halls, more town halls, you know, we want to hear more about what's happening in Parsippany. So, so we're just responding to that. And then the next one was going back to what I said before about the environmental advisory committee. But just generally formalizing the role of some of the other advisory committee groups, such as the traffic advisory committee. And the historic preservation, environmental advisory, excuse me, historic preservation advisory committee. Just to give them a more active role in, in some of the development decisions and, and, you know, at least more of a voice in what happens. And encouraging them also to submit their comments in, in a formal way. They have regular meetings, but there doesn't seem to be a kind of formal record from, from a lot of committees. So we just wanted to make that process in those groups more official.
Now, just to jump back a second to your, your road comment. It might be a good idea to include a map someplace of who owns what road in town.
Oh, yeah.
Who owns what road? Oh, absolutely.
We, we've got a conglomeration of state, county and local roads. And there's a pothole here, we can't do anything about that, that's county road.
Yeah, no, we will do that. And just to backtrack a little bit, this document will really come after the, I don't know if you remember the Parsippany Today document that we handed out. That was basically presenting all the existing conditions. And this presents the issues in the narrative and then the recommendations. So there's kind of like a three-step process. And so, for example, the roads and the ownership is, will be laid out in the, in that initial section. And then we'll talk about the, you know, the issues, so.
Speaking of other boards, has there been any attempt to communicate with the plant, the Board of Adjustment?
I knew you were going to say that.
I, I know it's very complicated.
Yeah, there has not been yet, I think it would be beneficial to reach out to them.
We're at a point where I think that probably makes a lot of sense. At this point, I know they're difficult and there are complications, but, but I'm willing to bet you that if we invited them and talked to them now about what we're doing here, that there might be a couple of them that show up.
Yeah, that's a good point, okay.
On the tenth.
Particularly important for them, I think, to, to see the number of people's concerns, as Taylor indicated on the questionnaire. I mean, what sense is it to, to, to develop all of these things? And then they go before the zoning board and allow someone to put their deck within two feet of their backyard anyway. That's, that's not preserving the integrity of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
You know, or you have a, you know, a small ranch house and a monster next to it, it just doesn't.
So I think at a minimum, I can work with Nora to get an email personally inviting them to the June 10 workshop. And maybe sending them the survey summary as well.
Okay, that's great. Regarding the survey, I know that, you know, that the rule of you snooze, you lose applies here. But is there any sense of the relative response rates, so the, particularly when we get to the issues of traffic, the focus of traffic concerns and things? If we don't have a lot of feedback from certain neighborhoods, you know, by definition, we're just not going to know necessarily as much about their concerns. And then down the road, we know how that goes. So how far off are we? I guess that's my, my long-winded question from, you know, some type of proportional response rate for given the population totals in these neighborhoods. The two main neighborhoods responded quite well. I mean, the ones that I consider main neighborhoods. But Intervale's not that small a neighborhood and that response rate seemed quite low.
Right. This isn't totally answering your question, but I, I just wanted to mention another thing that we're, we're going to do is that we, we had one question that said, what are improvements that you want to see in your neighborhood? And we summarized, we looked through and summarized them, but our next step is to, we're filtering those summaries by, by neighborhood. And so as part of our kind of narrative in describing issues in each neighborhood, we're going to kind of bring those out and really try to talk a little bit more about the neighborhood-specific issues. And so hopefully we'll have more of an answer. But we haven't, we haven't kind of really gotten into that for each neighborhood.
Not, not allowing people completely off the hook, the residents, but this could be a trail of breadcrumbs regarding the communication issues in the town. That there's certain, these neighborhoods that just, for whatever reason, you know, it just struck me, some of, some of the response rates for reasons that escaped me are, are so low.
So one thing we can do, because I, I agree, Bruce, one thing we could do is, you know, a lot of these have associations. I know Intervale has.
Yes.
We can try to get that contact information from the township and personally invite them to the June 10 workshop and, you know, ask them. I think we've done some of that outreach, I'll, I'll check with.
At, at the end of the day, if they don't, you know.
And it may be, we, we could have a board or something that doesn't require a person at the board, just like open-ended, you know, what do you want to see? You know, what are you concerned about in your neighborhood and allow them to indicate which neighborhood. Again, it's going to be you snooze, you lose, but at least it's a different way to try to reach them.
I don't know if anyone else feels that way, it just struck me as being very skewed.
Yep, yep.
It, it makes sense that the more communication we have, the better.
Yeah, it's likely to turn out.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So one of the things that had been talked about a lot in the past was the connectivity across the town between these neighborhoods. And I'm not seeing that as much anymore. Was there a reason why we're maybe downplaying that or?
Well, I think that, a lot of that is part of the sidewalks plan and the comprehensive trails program.
Okay.
So, so I think that's the way we were kind of getting at, I mean, in terms of vehicular connection, there's not a whole lot you can do. But we think that the pedestrian connections are, you know, are really the opportunities between the neighborhoods.
Okay.
I was just going to add to that, something that, that we were thinking in, in like larger themes for the plan was that connectivity seemed to come out in, in a lot of different ways. So there's the roads, there's the trails, but there's also, and I'm going to get into it in a little bit, there's, there's arts and cultural elements to bring people together. There's the, the website and the branding and there are all these different ways to create connectivity.
Okay.
And so that seems like one of those, you know, big ideas, almost like a vision idea for the township of, of ways to promote connectivity, to bring, you know, the neighborhoods together.
So separate from physical connection, maybe we can bring them again, okay.
Yeah, it's kind of confusing.
Something I'd, I had heard about from other communities was setting up a program where, where there were maybe opportunities to make connections, to identify those properties which might be inhibiting that and set them up as, as lots which might be identified for the town to take over at some point in the future. To build those connections at some point in the future. So not to impair the current homeowners or anything like that, but to identify an opportunity in the future where we could build those connections and make things easier.
Similar, similar to how the township prioritized open space.
Yes, yeah.
Keep in mind, we have a lot of things that don't intentionally promote, I think, the divisiveness.
Sure.
You've got the two high schools, you've got the highway that divides, you've got Park Troy East, Park Troy West. You've got Little Vikings and you've got PAL Redhawks. And there the twain shall meet, you know.
Yeah.
There's a former mayor that just, she would rail when you would, I guess I said what it was, didn't I? When you talked about this side and that side of town, it's one town.
Well, Route eighty became our Berlin Wall.
But more two eighty-seven.
And two eighty-seven also, yeah.
Okay.
Or two oh-two, however you want to look at it, but.
Pick your road.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of places where we, we create divisions and I'd just love to find ways to, to work around that.
Great.
I mean, you know, we spoke earlier about the branding in different neighborhoods. And that can kind of be a uniting force by highlighting the different neighborhoods. Oh, Parsippany's a place where you can come and check out all these different things because there are these big roads and maybe we're never actually going, we're not going to blow them up and make it all. We can't tear down the Berlin Wall here because it's still there. But we can create this unifying force through our shared pride of our different neighborhoods.
Yeah, we talked about that at one of our focus groups, which was like about arts, culture and historic. And, you know, a way to kind of turn that into an advantage, that you have these really like interesting different neighborhoods that are all together in one town. So don't try to, you know, force people to think of themselves as Parsippany first, but celebrate that. And kind of use it as a, as a point of connection.
Yeah, well, the, I think the zip codes would go a long way, but that's another issue altogether.
That's true.
I can't tell you how many times I, I come across somebody at work and there I go, I live in Morris Plains, and I go, where do you live? And, and they, they tell me what their address is, I'm like, no, you're, you live in Parsippany.
I, I encountered someone recently who said, I live in Morris Plains, but my garbage is picked up by Parsippany. You live in Parsippany.
So the, the branding that you're talking about sounds really valuable to me from, maybe it's even something you can put on top of the street signs to say Parsippany, you know, Intervale, Parsipony.
Because it's really about promoting kind of pride in both, both levels, neighborhood and your town.
Don't fight it, go with it.
Like a little table featuring different neighborhoods, I don't know, I want to talk about that.
Well, I've got, I've got all sorts of connectivity things. Smith Road to my mind is, is a horror show. I mean, you can't, there's no sidewalk, you can't walk under eighty to get from one section. You can't, Smith Road over here, it is a spaghetti of crappy design.
And there is retail back there, which two-thirds of the town never sees, you know.
I mean, it's, 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 it's really truly cut off. That, that section is really truly cut off from all of Parsippany, the way it's structured and the way you have to walk to and from it. You can't.
I pity the westbound traveler on forty-six that wants to make a U-turn to go to Houland.
Oh, yes, that, that's me coming off of Vail, having to go boom, 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 boom.
More importantly, I mean, there have been, I commute coming under Route eighty on Smith Road every night. And the number of times when I've seen a pedestrian try to navigate that, there is zero chance that they can navigate that without being under risk of being hit because they have to be in the roadway. There's nowhere for them to go.
It's bad.
And then you see other places where, where, like I'm thinking of Parsippany Road, after Lanidex, when you come over the bridge to Littleton. And you can see it's worn, worn in the grass, how many people are walking, but there's no sidewalk.
Yeah.
There's sidewalk like in, on the bridge itself, but not here.
It's just white.
Yeah, so things like that.
And I, and I'm just, I'm also just going to bring up three of my favorite little teeny issues that probably will not be addressed at the moment. But the first is one which I don't think we should change because I like the way it is, but that's multifamily homes. The ability to have a, either a lodger or let a room. We have over many, many years not allowed that and I think correctly so. But the movement that I'm seeing, I sent you a link some time ago, that California is literally thinking and making it illegal to have single-family homes.
Minneapolis, just get it.
To zone for single-family homes because that way there's a better chance of being able to get affordable housing. All right, I don't think that's going to get anywhere, but I just thought it'd be a good heads up for this board to at least contemplate it.
I will say there's a reason why the number one goal in person order is preserving your, your neighborhoods.
Right.
I don't think that we want to blow it up to that extent.
That would be.
That being said, there, there are, you know, there are things that, you know, that could change. And I think that one of the things that the housing plan is looking at is maybe allowing potential for accessory apartments. You know, and there would have to be provisions for that, you know, you'd have to have a certain lot area. And you are seeing that happen more and more in suburban areas. And it could be a way for an older person to afford to stay in their home. So in ti, places where it makes sense. But in terms of, you know, outlawing single-family zoning, that is not on the table in this plan.
Very revolutionary in New Jersey.
I think I wouldn't see you after that. Probably dismissed.
Right, but things that I thought was absurd, absurd ten years ago are now being seriously considered in many places, so it's.
I mean, I will say the Minneapolis example was, was big in planning world.
Yeah.
Right, and, I mean, that's a city that was dealing with a lot of unique things and that's the route that they chose. People seem excited about it, but I don't know that it's appropriate everywhere. But I know it's not appropriate everywhere.
You get into a fuzzy area when you try to define single-family. I'm a single-family, my wife and I and one son live in our house. And across the street, there's a family with three kids, two aunts and two uncles, and I think another child in one of us.
There should be flexibility, but the word, where do you say that's too much?
Well, state law kind of decides that, that's sort of set by state law, there's a lot of case law precedent that says whether you're functioning as a single-family or not.
Okay, well, I, I view that as way above my pay grade anyway, so.
It's above mine, too.
But you had three things, so that was number one.
The other things actually have to do, they're actually all kind of combined. The first is, if I understand our zoning correctly, there's literally no place where much of the telecommuting, as we used to call it, is truly legal.
Yeah.
At least not without telling zoning we're doing this here, which is, is silly. I think we've been very smart about flexibly not noticing. And I don't know whether that should be addressed at all in there, but I, I want to make sure that the subject is in front of us. And that leads right into professional home occupation or professional home office and customary home occupation statutes. We had many, many years where we, I don't think we ever really satisfactorily defined that. I mean, we constantly were trying to catch up with the technology as to what was customary, if you want to call it that, versus what is a reasonable professional home occupation. And professional home occupations are supposedly never on a local road. So when you have the circulation element, you say this is a local road and this is a, a collector or whatever. Our professional home office said it can't be on, it has to be on something other than a local road.
Which seems a little silly in the days of Amazon delivering to all of our houses. Right, because that was, that was always the driving factor is getting deliveries and also things like garbage, parking. But, yeah, there, there's a difference and it's in your two thousand fourteen plan and I think we envision carrying it forward as a recommendation to look at home occupations. To me, there's a difference between that and telecommuting. I mean, telecommuting generally is just working from home and no one knows. I mean, I, I work from home regularly and it's just me.
You shouldn't have told us.
It's just me sitting, sitting with my, you know, laptop, you know, on my couch basically. But that's different than a, a business that you might have visitors, you might have deliveries, you might have an employee.
These were the distinctions we would make when somebody would come before, for a variance. Is customary home occupation, the whole point was you, you wouldn't have people coming to your home to do the, for, for the occupation. And you, you might. And you, you might have some deliveries, but it would be small stuff and you wouldn't carry inventory in the house.
We've done some work on that, and we-
Professional home occupation, you actually could hire a non-resident assistant. And you could have thirty percent of the, of the structure dedicated to, you know, whatever it was. Whether it's a medical clinic, or a doctor's office, or a lawyer's office, or accountant's office.
Were those like rules of thumb that the Board of Adjustment used, or would they really downsize?
Those were part of what we talked about whenever a case would come before us, is, is what kind of deliveries? What kind of, would we need, would you need-
Would there be patronage?
What, what is your patronage? Are you going to have one person at a time coming to your office, or are you going to have multiple people coming to your office? Do you have an employee who is not a resident, and therefore there's, you've got a car?
Do you have a parking space for that employee?
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, these are-
Do you have a separate entrance, all of that? So yeah, I think that's definitely something we should look at, including, and sort of formalizing what it sounds like the board previously kind of used as guidance, including in the zoning process, what it should be.
I mean, because the, the problem is that it's not the same as it was ten years ago, or fifteen years ago, or twenty years ago, and it's not going to be the same in five or ten years.
You gotta open the door to, to a lot of landscapers that park their truck and trailer at their home. Or a plumber or electrician that has the van with commercial plates on it, which, which park there.
Which is not dedicated to that.
Well, historically, one of the things that we did on the Board of Adjustment is you really weren't supposed to store inventory of any significant amount on premises. And that's how we got away with getting rid of most of the landscapers and the, even the plumbers to an extent, so.
And now you have these people who sell makeup.
And jewelry.
Or if you're not in the right gender.
What do you tell them about the pink cat?
But I, I know, like a lot of, a lot of women who, you know, the husband works and she sells, you know, makeup from, from home, and they do have to store some of the inventory, like in the rod. Sort of like Mary Kay for the twenty-first century.
I mean, and, but you have people like rug cleaner people, and, and they work with the chemicals and things that you might not want in a residential neighborhood.
Yeah.
The rotor ruder guy, these are all commercial vehicles that are parked in their, in their residence.
The ones that came before us that were very professional had no problems storing it somewhere else. But there's some that you know.
Yeah.
That, you know, I got a job tomorrow, I'm gonna leave it here, that kind of stuff.
Taylor, I think you're on to something with the, with the branding. The way I look at the town is, it's the NFL. And there's the AFC and the NFC. And there's a whole bunch of teams. But when you come to the end of the day, any, any stuff they sell, it's got to have the NFL logo on it, so.
I like that.
That's a nice summation.
Yeah, just, this is the last one, just the, the very last one, just two recommendations. This is for arts, culture, and historic resources. One was to promote the enhancement of facilities and enhance arts, culture, and education. This goes also back to that idea of connectivity. We did hear that there was a desire for some kind of central civic community center. We know there are some spaces that, that are being used, such as the library, and there's the, the Women's Theater. But there could be maybe something that's, you know, more of a, a central space for, for the township. And then safeguard historic sites and provide incentives for preservation of historic, preservation of historic and older buildings. So the big one for that is updating the historic preservation elements of the master plan, which is something we think could be a next step for the township to consider.
And most of these came from, I think, from the historical preservation advisory committee.
Would, would the, the historical preservation committee be able to, to come up with maps and inventories perhaps?
Well, it sounds like that's what the historic preservation department would do, would be basically to list all of those properties, am I right? And it would be, it'd basically be a survey, I'm sure they would be involved in that process.
But I'm also thinking of the previous point of having individual neighborhoods marked on a map as, not just as a name in a corner, but also showing exactly where they are.
They, they some time ago came up with a list of individual properties, historical.
Yeah, I, I had seen that a long time ago.
I don't know if it's been updated, or I don't think so.
I think what you're talking about is like a historical neighborhood map, right? Which could be part of the sort of township branding.
Township branding, it should actually be a part of the master plan as far as I'm concerned, but, but we note, you know, this is Lake Hiawatha, this is Mount Tabor, this is Troy Hills, this is, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
Kind of like those folks that lived in Morris Plains, not Persipony. People swear, I live in Lake Hiawatha, I don't live in Persipony.
There is that. But we've got, we've got friends who live in Lake Hiawatha who think they live in Boon, so.
So it's, yeah, anything else?
It's all still.
You need to account for the annexations going on there now.
That is a good point, where you should change the boundary of all the maps.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
How much?
Just a little bit.
It's a complete redo, complete redo now.
Yeah, I will, I'll, I'll give you the block a lot, yeah, sorry.
Maybe run off.
Yeah, every single map.
Yeah, well, you could change the base map. Like another one that we'll have to change is, like I told you about, is the township council did, we, they, they approved all the ordinances last week that, that you previously talked about, and one of those is the rezoning of Persipony Road. So it's like four-
I fixed it.
You fixed it, yeah. Four properties that were residential and are now business, so.
Yay.
Yeah.
Yep. All right. When did you want these notes back?
So we, we're asking if you could give us anything back by June third, which I think is Monday. It's actually our next meeting date, right Nora, next week? That gives us a week to make any changes that we need to, in preparation for the workshop.
We email you.
Yeah, email me, or email Nora, we'll get it.
Yeah, but this is a really important document. There's a lot in here, and so we, you know, encourage you to spend the time really to look through it. It would be really valuable for us, I think the article would be better in the end if you, if you take the time now.
And, and you can keep looking at it after June third too.
To get people to come.
Yep, very good.
This is great, thank you.
Not since fifteen yet, we're earlier than last time. We don't always love it when we have other application items.
Did you guys hear that they got an award?
We did, we did, we're excited.
Really, congratulations.
Thank you.
Smart Growth Award.
Yep.
So we've got the Grammys, the Tonys, and the Hoboken. We've got the Grammys, the Tonys, and the Hoboken.
And hopefully, hopefully in a year or two, we can give you work, you know, for preparing the township.
Well, it's not too hard to see why if you did Hoboken, happens, as long as you're doing that. Taylor, Noah, Susan, thank you, you're done?
We're finished.
There you go, okay. Happy Memorial Day everyone, see you June third. Motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourn, Bonnie Aiken.
So moved.
All right, thanks everybody.
Thank you all.